Good evening, this is the Milton Planning Board. Welcome to our seventh meeting of fiscal year 2017. I'm Brian Fers, the Chair. I'd ask the rest of the members to introduce themselves, starting with Alex Whiteside.
Alex Whiteside, a member of the Board.
Michael Kelly, a member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Julia Getman, Plurk.
Tim Shurinsky, Assistant Town Planner.
April Lamoreau, a member.
Cheryl Tagheas, a member.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a couple of, I have a couple of announcements with regard to the agenda as part of our administrative items. Our next two meetings are October 27th, November, and November 10th. We also are going to try to approve some minutes this evening. We have September 7th, which was emailed and hard copied to the Board on Friday, September 16th, and we have September 22nd, which was emailed and hard copied to the Board on Friday, October 7th. I'd ask our Secretary to weigh in on whether he's read and given notes.
I think that what we want people to do, and I didn't, I didn't quite finish, September 27th, but I think that if you look on the page of, on page two, where it lists what the members said about at the conclusion of the cluster development hearing, that they might want to make sure that what is said expresses what they said.
Okay.
And I just get it to Julia. In the meantime, I have, I have some suggestive changes. I'm thinking that we could have the, the meeting minutes redistributed for next time.
Can we do that, please? But there are a lot of changes I see out here. Okay, and then make a special note on September 22nd, on page two, there's a lot of discussion being referenced, so just please check your, check your comments.
But the other one was, was fine, was it, Julia? Was it fine?
You've already received comments on that?
You've got your comments on the 7th?
Any comments I received have been put in.
Okay, do you have a motion on that?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the September 7th meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. Couple of quick things before we go into the agenda. First of all, we have a 7:30 meeting this evening for the Carrick Realty Trust. It's a special permit for Central Ave planned unit development, which continued from September 22nd. That meeting will be continued, so if you're here this evening for that, we do not anticipate taking testimony or having discussion on that project tonight. The applicant has asked for continuance based on its ongoing discussions with the Board of Selectmen. We have a 7:15 public hearing for Pulte Homes, which I expect will take some time. We also have some old business on here. We have an A and R for 1259 Brush Hill Road that I'd like to ask if the 7:15 public hearing member is here, if we can do that first, and also discussion of a potential Ice House development. I noticed that there's a fair amount of people here that I believe are here. Could I see a show of hands for people that are here for the Ice House development project? And then how about for the Pulte project? Okay, so I may ask that we do, it's pretty even there, so maybe we'll just do the 1259 first. Okay, so is anyone for Pulte here yet? I mean, the applicant, sorry. Okay. All right, well then we'll get to that at 7:15. So that will bring us to Citizens Speak. Is there anyone here to speak on anything that is not publicly advertised tonight, which is the Pulte Homes Carrick Realty Trust, 1259 Brush Hill Road, or the Ice House Development? Okay, we have one, two.
Not the Ice House, that one, I had the Ice House.
But you're not speaking on Ice House, though, or are you?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I, for public, my, my first time here.
You're here for Citizens Speak.
Yeah.
All right, great. So I see three people, whoever wants to start, there are three in the front row.
Do we have a copy of the Ice House language? We didn't hear.
Hi, my name is Phil Johening. I live at 23 Parkway Drive in Milton. I was wondering if anybody had seen Mr. Prondak's letter from 10-6. And what I'm talking about specifically is the Thayer Nursery special permit, which was granted last July by this Board. And what I fear is that this special permit has created more chaos than, than could be justified. And I think there were a couple of things that the Board did that were unfortunate. One was that the Board granted a three-year permit rather than a one-year permit, which was requested by the abutters. And so we don't, even though abutters at the time warned that there would be noncompliance and that we should start slowly with this special permit, nevertheless, the Board gave a three-year permit. Mr. Prondak's letter, just read sections of it. Dear Maggie and Josh, as you are aware, the zoning Board of Appeals in case 2502 upheld my enforcement order to Thayer Nursery dated 5/25/16. The Board, in its consideration of your appeal, further determined that Thayer Nursery is not entitled to operate its commercial landscape and firewood business until a special permit granted by the Planning Board on July 15, under a special permit granted on July 15, 2016, until all mitigation measures required therein are complete. The Board also agreed with my determination that prior to the implementation of the new special permit, they must first apply for and receive a new occupancy permit from the Office of the Building Commissioner prior to operating commercial landscape and firewood delivery business. Further, there were two public hearings for case 2502. I asked Maggie Oldfield if the landscape business was operating at 270 Hillside Street. She stated yes, indicating that the landscape business is operating at that location. So no mitigation has been accomplished and a landscape business is being operated. On Friday, 9:30, 2016, at 7:15 a.m., myself and Inspector Jay Bulow visited the Thayer Nursery site at 270 Hillside Street. There we met with Josh Oldfield. I asked if the landscape business was running from this site. Josh responded that it was and that was, he was in survival mode, just doing whatever he had to do to keep his business going. I asked if the trucks had already left for this, for the site that morning, and Josh responded that they had. He also responded that he tries to keep trucks and equipment at job sites as much as possible. Remaining on the site, we saw three nursery trucks, one Bobcat, and two trailers. We also inspected the barn. We saw a substantial amount of firewood. I estimated it to be approximately 30 cords of wood. Approximately one hour later, Josh left a message on my voicemail stating that he wished to recant his statement of earlier that day and that Thayer Nursery was not running the landscape business from 270 Hillside Street. The following is a summary of recent complaints received by my office. 9/13/2016, 6:30 p.m., trucks and equipment returning to the Thayer Nursery site. 9/20/2016, 7:20 p.m., truck and trailer pulled into Thayer Nursery site. 9/22/2016, 7 a.m., truck and Bobcat noise heard by an abutter. 9/23/16, 12:45 p.m., truck left Thayer Nursery with a load of firewood and proceeded to Route 3 South. 9/26, 4:30 p.m., truck towing hydrocedar returned to Thayer Nursery site. Hydrocedar was previously determined to be landscape equipment. Based on the fact that both Josh and Maggie, as owners and representatives of Thayer Nursery, have each stated that the landscape business operates out of 270 Hillside Street, Joe Prondak is saying that this is, that the, that he is issuing a cease and desist order. And both of them asserted that they had the right to operate the business on the site, though they don't have an occupancy permit. Joe went on to say, upon receipt of this notice, you are hereby directed to cease and desist the operation of the commercial landscape and firewood delivery business. Failure to comply, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, I wonder why, after a year of hearings or more, because we had two special permits that were discussed here, this is happening. And my conclusion is that this Board does not listen to all of the people who come before it to speak in a public hearing. That I think that this Board comes with an idea in its head of how it wants to proceed, and that's the direction it goes in, no matter what anyone says. You were warned that there would not be compliance. You were warned that, that the town really does not have a capability to enforce, and an undue burden falls on the abutters, and these kinds of things happen. And I think it's, it's, it's really shameful that we have come to this. So I guess in closing, I would urge this Board to better listen to abutters and applicants so that a more fair resolution can be reached. I think it's sad for us, for all of us, that we have to wait three years until this comes before the Board again. And who knows what the town will spend with, with this effort. So I think you, you really need to listen to people a lot better than you do. I don't feel that I was listened to at all. And in fact, when the permit was being, let's say, deliberated, the applicants were asked to come to the table, which I have never seen before. So the applicants were part of the deliberation process, though the abutters were not. That was truly unusual and I think wrong. So I hope, you know, maybe you can all get a copy of Mr. Prondak's letter and learn a little something. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for Citizens Speak this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Fers, members of the Planning Board, Mr. Clark, Mr. Shurinsky. My name is Hale Smith. I live at 1632 Canton Avenue. I am an abutter and a longtime neighbor to the proposed Northland Residential Corporation's development at the Carberry-Wilcott estate. The Blue Hill Neighborhood Association has recently reformed itself and meets regularly now. I am speaking this evening on behalf of that association as its president. At the Planning Board meeting two weeks ago, Mr. Dolly and Mr. Corcoran gave the impression that there was broad neighborhood support for the 64-unit proposal. The zoning change required for the current plan is not supported by the Neighborhood The Blue Hill Neighborhood Association recognizes the right of Northland Residential Corporation to develop the Carberry-Wilcott property, but still reserves, still has reservations about their proposal. These include the preservation of Cannon Avenue Viewscapes and the character of the neighborhood, concerns with the overall density of units, buildings, and traffic, impact on the Blue Hills reservation and Wilcott Trail. Neighbors have met with Northland multiple times since March, and we hope to continue good faith conversations with them towards a plan that better, better benefits the neighbors and the town. Thank you for your time listening and for listening to our concerns. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have a question for you, and it's a request, it's not a, anything beyond that. But this Board is, has been struggling to understand neighborhood associations and their membership and their representation. So to the extent possible, it would be very helpful if you could give Julia a copy of whatever, whoever your membership is of that. And again, it's a request, but it just helps us to understand who you're speaking on behalf of.
Sure.
So that's all, that's all I would ask for.
Okay.
You can just give that to Julia through an email.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is someone else ready? One more?
Steven.
Sure, come forward.
How are you? Hi, I'm Keith Schleicher. I am just coming to voice my support for the proposed Ice House proposal. I live at 376 Blue Hills Parkway, which is diagonally across the street from the proposed marketplace and everything that's going to be going through. I am also a town meeting member, recently voted in. And all the people I've talked to in my neighborhood, which is basically between, you know, from Audubon, Parkway Crescent, Warren, all those streets, everyone is overwhelmingly in favor of having a nice marketplace where we can go and get food in our neck of the woods. We don't have to travel outside of Milton to get food. We don't have to travel all the way over to East Milton, which can also be quite a, a chore at times. So having something nice for our neighborhood would definitely increase our values, and it's going to change regardless. It'd be nice if the people that want this can have a say in there. I think it'd be really something nice for, for the people that live in West Milton.
Great.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the Ice House is on the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
So comments that you want to be sort of as part of the Ice House record, we'll try to incorporate those, these into those, but the record will be based on the agenda items. So thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak to Citizens Speak? Sure.
So my name is Susan Koch-Baser. I live on Warren Ave, 115 Warren Ave, and I'm one of those people Keith is talking about, who lives in the neighborhood where the word's going around. And I've been in Milton for, I think, well, he was a baby when he came, so like 13 years, and heard of various opportunities or possibilities for developments like what's being talked about for Ice House. And I've gotten excited every time, and I've gotten disappointed every time. I'm excited again, and I really hope, I'm very supportive of the project, and I hope that it turns into something that we can enjoy and that adds to the community. And I, I think it would be a wonderful opportunity, and I hope that it goes forward. So just wanted to say I support also.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for Citizens Speak this evening? Okay, very good, thank you.
There's one other person.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you. Come on up.
I thought we had to wait to speak on the Ice House.
Well, we should, but that's, we were supposed to, but it's okay, you can do it now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Aneta McSweeney, and I live on the Parkway as well. I'd like to voice my concern about changing the zoning of the Ice House property to accommodate this development of a marketplace. The proposed mixed-use development, including a bank, a market, cafe, resident housing, appears to be out of scale for the area. This two-acre parcel is bordering conservation land, a pond, and single-family homes. At the present time and for many years, one would not even know there was any commercial zoning on this property. It appears as a large house with a detached barn in the back. The development will increase traffic on a road which sees more than its fair share of traffic daily, from 4 o'clock in the morning to late in the evening. The service vehicles for this marketplace will have to be accommodated by changes in the historic Parkway, with signage, traffic light, cuts in the median with loss of trees. I oppose any loss of green space on the Parkway. The town should be working with DCR to improve its beauty, so the drivers know that they are in Milton, not in Dartchester. The Parkway is a historic gateway to our town, not only to the Blue Hills. I would hope that you will consider these points before allowing permanent changes to this section of Milton. To create a small business district on the Parkway is inappropriate. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to Citizens Speak? At Citizens Speak, excuse me. Okay. So just reminding everybody, we have a 7:15 public hearing. I guess I'm interested in the Board's take on whether we want to ask if they'll continue it, so we can do the A and R, if you wish to go right into the public hearing.
Why don't we take another show of hands and, uh...
All right, that's a good idea.
A popularity contest.
So could you just, let me know who is here for 1259 Brush Hill Road A and R? All right, and the Pulte project? Oh, okay, well then let's just go ahead and do the agenda. All right, very good. So we're going to jump right into our 7:15 Pulte Homes special permit for cluster development. I'm going to just announce before we start this that we're not going to start the 7:30 p.m. Carrick Realty Trust hearing until after the 17 public hearing, 7:15 public hearing, and I remind everybody that the 7:30 hearing will be immediately continued. So we'll open Pulte Homes Special Permit for Cluster Development, Milton Woods Town Farm Site. Evening.
Good evening. Hello? Let's see. Early tonight. Okay.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for the record again, my name is Mark Mastriani. I'm with Pulte Homes. We're the applicant of the cluster development at the end of Governor Stone Lane, known as Milton Woods. I'm here with Reed Bloat, Reed Bloat from Pulte Homes as well. And again, Mike Rizzotti is here from Marshand and Associates. He's our engineer, helping us with the engineering plans and the approval process. And we have a new face with us tonight, standing near the door. Come in the room, Chris.
Door.
This is Chris Huntress. He's with Huntress Landscaping, and he's a landscape architect that has helped us to respond to some of the comments that we heard at the last meeting. So if it's okay, I'd like to just update the Board on some of the topics that we discussed at the last meeting and the progress that we've made, and then we can, we can go from there. So the first topic is the stormwater design. As we've discussed, it's been, it's being peer reviewed by the Board's peer review engineer, Eggleston, Lisa Eggleston is peer reviewing the stormwater. She gave us a very, very thorough, detailed review back in, back in July, and we've been working on responding to her, to her review since then, amongst other plan changes, which has been happening concurrently as well. We did have a chance to meet with Lisa recently and go over her comments in detail, and we did respond formally back to Lisa in a letter dated October 5th. And today, we did receive further correspondence from Lisa, or the Board received correspondence from Lisa, saying that she's had a chance to, to start to evaluate our revised plans and our revised stormwater design and our responses to her comments. And she has, and we're down to a list of, a list of about five, five comments that we received from her today, and some other ones that she, that she mentioned. But, so we got, we received them today. We haven't had a chance to evaluate them thoroughly, but we've received them, we will go through them in detail, and we will be working with Lisa again to, to make sure we respond to her and to address her remaining, her remaining concerns. The second topic that we've discussed is the drainage concerns that have been brought up by the Quissetbrooke neighborhood. And since last meeting, Mike Rizzotti, our engineer, has, has had a chance to, to dive back into our design and, and really evaluate that area and the impacts to the Quissetbrooke apartments further and really thoroughly study that area. And our position remains the same, is that the stormwater design of our project up here at Milton Woods does not, will not impact the, the Quissetbrooke condominiums. And I know there's concern from them, we appreciate the comment, I know the Board has comments from them. Mike has information, knowledge, we're already willing, able to present and share, and I'm sure maybe Ms. Eggleston will be able to weigh in and maybe help the, the discussion. The third topic is the engineering, Town DPW Department. We've received a comment letter from them on August 11th. We've since responded back to the Engineering DPW Department with the revised plans in our response letter, addressing their comments in their letter. We did have an opportunity to sit down with Engineering and DPW to go through their comments so that we fully understood them. And today, we did receive a response back that, that their comments have been addressed, with the one exception that they'd like us to show the snow, the snow areas on the lotting plans, and we're, and we'll make sure that we follow up and we do that. The next topic that we spent a great deal of time talking about at the last meeting was the projects grading relation to cuts and fills. And there was some discussion of providing the Board some sections through certain areas in order to better evaluate the cuts and the fills and, and the sections and the way the project was, was designed. So since that meeting, we did submit sections through, five sections through certain areas of the site that, that were required. Mr. Huntress helped us prepare and provide those, and he's here tonight, and we can definitely walk through them for the Board. And the updated plans that we did submit did include revised grading, where Mike evaluated certain areas in order to be able to reduce the fill in areas that we discussed. Mike's able to go through his revised grading and, and the things that he was able to do, but we're happy to report that we were able to reduce the fill in the, in the lower areas of the site. The other important topic that we've been discussing through the process is the, the discussion of the 100-foot neighborhood buffer. The revised plans that we've submitted made substantial changes to our designs and the gradings in the rear of our lots, which, so, so now we're showing a, an approved 100-foot buffer from the previous buffer that we discussed at the last meeting. We have no work proposed within 100 feet in the buffer between lots 13 through 23, which is the majority of the lots along the, the existing residential property lines. And again, the 100-foot buffer that we're proposing consists of two features. One is an open space strip, which will be owned by the, it's a 40-foot open space strip, 40 feet wide. It will be owned by the Milton Woods Homeowners Association, and it will be put under a permanent conservation restriction that's required by zoning. And the other 60 feet is a limited tree-clear area on the rear of lots 13 through 23. And we did submit some suggested language to the Board of the restriction of the treecut area on the, on the 60-foot rear of those lots, for your consideration. The restriction would be, would be recorded on the subdivision plan, subdivision plans as part of the as part of the project. We also intend to record the restriction on the deeds of the, of the lots, of lots 13 through 23, which have the 60-foot restriction. And also, we, we intend to give the homeowners association the re, the enforcement rights to enforce the deed restriction on the lots. And the last topic that, that I had that we discussed was some traffic concerns that were brought up in a, in a, in a butter letter, and we did reach out to MDM Transportation, who's our, who's our traffic consultant expert on our team, and he, he analyzed the traffic comments that were in the, the butter letter, and he did provide a response back to the board, addressing and responding to all of the, the comments, and that memo was dated September 21st, 2016. And I think Bob and his partner Dan addressed all of the, the concerns that were, that were brought up. Do we have copies of all of this?
No.
They should be in your yellow folders.
That we got tonight?
Yeah.
Is Lisa Eggleston here tonight?
Yes, she is.
Let's know. Okay.
So you should have a clip that has a John Townsend email on the front.
Got that.
Below that is an email from Lisa Eggleston. Below that is the guide to the sections. Beneath that guide, there should be section E.
Right.
Beneath that is the MDM Transportation Consultants Memorandum on Traffic, and then beneath that is the 100-foot buffer language.
Yeah. April, did you find yours?
Tim, can you advance that plan to the...
Sorry for the interruption. You were going through all this, and none of us were aware we had it in front of us. Okay, thank you.
So, so in conclusion of just the opening remarks is that we are very pleased with the progress we've made, and I hope the board sees, sees that, and, and we can further discuss any of these, these topics with the board. Your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, I know Ms. Eggleston is here. We should probably hear from her. I'd like, she came out, I'd like to hear her give a presentation on her findings and her interactions with you, so if we could start there, that would be helpful, and then we'll see where we want to go from there.
Okay, that's fine.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Lisa Eggleston, professional engineer doing businesses Eggleston Environmental, and I am here as the peer reviewer for the board, reviewing the stormwater drainage design for the project for compliance with the Milton subdivision regulations and stormwater by law and by extension, the Massachusetts stormwater standards. So as was mentioned, I did do a review earlier, I don't actually have that letter in front of me, in October, was it?
I didn't.
I mean, no, I'm sorry, in...
July.
July, yes. Time flies when you're having fun.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. Just borrow this for a minute. And that had a number of comments outlined in it. I think there were 22 of them, questions, comments, and so forth. I also did meet with representatives of Marshand and Associates last week to kind of go through, talk about strategies, how they were going to respond to the comments and so forth. And then I have just had a chance to review the last revision in response to that. So I did send an email this morning. We had talked last week and, and, you know, I had told them I would try to get the review done, and, and I really didn't get it done until, until sometime today, and wanted to alert them to the fact that there were still some concerns that I had in terms of complying with the stormwater standards. And those are specifically having to do with the, basically, the, the design of the stormwater management system has been revised so that only two of the basins are currently proposed, two or three, I'm not sure actually. I think one of them may have been an error. The two of them are proposed as infiltration basins, and the remainder are as either extended detention basins or sediment four bays that would pre-treat the runoff, and then it would go to these extended detention basins. So what I focused my review on today was on the functionality of those infiltration basins and the, and the extended detention basins. And I had some concern because the two infiltration basins are still within 50 feet of a wetland. The Massachusetts stormwater standards do require a 50-foot setback. So that's something that, that Marshanda will need to address. In one case, it may be a matter of regrading, the other one I'm not quite as sure about.
Can you point out where those are?
Sure. It's infiltration basin three and five. I think you just had five there.
Five is the one.
Okay, so that's infiltration basin five, and actually, that, that line at the, at the bottom of that basin, no, other end of it, keep going down.
Let's see if that is, Tim.
Who has that?
It's Tim. Tim's driving.
No, I don't have the laser. I don't know.
No, no.
Uh huh. Okay, all right. Can you just point, can you just point to the, to the 50-foot buffer zone? That area right in there, that line is the 50-foot buffer to the wetland, and as you can see, that actually cuts right through the basin. There, you know, I think, I think Marshanda had one interpretation of what that 50-foot, 50-foot setback requires is, is from the actual footprint of where you're infiltrating. I actually have had discussions with representatives of DEP who tell me it's the structure itself which takes it to the top of the berm. But in this particular case, either way, it doesn't meet that requirement.
May I ask a question about this basin while we're on this basin?
Sure.
We've had some of the residents who live in the abutting development come in and talk to us about their concerns about putting this very close or right on their property line and whether there would be impact, you know, really from a stormwater point of view, but also I'm curious whether there's any regulation about the distance from the abutting property.
There is. There's a 10-foot setback from a property line, and this, just because of that buffer that, that the entire development has around it is well within that. It meets that requirement.
So asking the development team, you've moved that inward now because it was on the property line before, I think?
Yes. Tim, can I ask you to, I don't remember what PDF it is, might be Drainage Discharge 5 or something like that?
Yep.
That kind of shows the blow-up of that area and the pond. Yep. Now, the one above that.
The other one?
We can get to that too, Mike. All right, so what I've done here is this is a, so, Tim, we have to scroll.
Tim, let's go down.
Yeah, down, Tim. There we go. Get closer there. So here's, here's the basin we're talking about. It's kind of orientated differently, but here's the wetland that we're discharging to, and the condos that are the closest are right down in here, so, Tim, can you...
Tim, can you pan that a little more?
There we go. All right. So what we did was superimpose the condominium buildings that, from GPS, and this would be the closest building here, and I believe the abutters that had concern about the drainage really wasn't so much in this direction because this is higher than the pond area here or the basin area. I think it was these buildings here that might be the, the issue. So what is shown here on this plan is in green, the flow pattern for the, for the wetland as it, as it goes off-site, if you will. These people have expressed some concern about drainage, I believe, and when I viewed what was going on around the perimeter of these buildings, the, the hill here comes down to the back of these buildings, and there really is not much of an area around the building that's flat or pitching away from the building. There's an attempt of a small swale that runs around and brings it to the front, and on this building here, the swale runs from this corner down and falls and brings it around the back of the building here, and where it falls down, you can see the topography is falling very quickly on that side of the building. This area is very flat in here, and it kind of extends in this manner here, but this is definitely higher. So what happens here in this part of the watershed in their property comes down and pretty much sits in here and then moves towards us. So the elevation difference between this area where the water tends to want to sit in these buildings is a foot, maybe two in elevation, if that. So that's where I think they're experiencing their problem. So what I tried to do with these arrows is to show that our water will be running like that, and their water is running towards us, so that there will not be any impact from our basin to their property. And I also took the initiative, if you want to call it that. Originally, we had the outlet going in this manner, which they, people had indicated to me they had an issue with. I ended up moving it all the way over to here, so really, the water now goes into this flatter wetland here on our, on, fully on our site, and then makes its way down the swale into the bigger wetland and then off towards Uncwoodie Road.
Okay, so now, Ms. Eggleston, do you agree with that assessment?
I do. We actually discussed it last week at our meeting and kind of went through a very similar analysis where we looked at the topography and so forth. I will say that I've not been over to the abutting condominiums. I wasn't, you know, on the radar screen when I was, when I was looking at the drainage. I did drive through there, but I wasn't focused on the, on that drainage issue. But it is apparent to me from the topography that the, the drainage from this, this infiltration basin would not be causing a flooding problem on that abutting property.
So just to follow up on that, the Condominium Association has asked us to, and I don't like the word guarantee, but guarantee that all potential runoff from the drainage system shall be directed away from the Quissetbrooke property. So in your expert opinion, you believe that we can, we can suggest that all potential runoff from the drainage system will be directed away from their property?
Well, if Tim could go back to the, to the current plans, I think we can show you that the, that the discharge from that basin has been right there. That is the, the revised discharge, so it has in fact physically been directed away from the abutting property. And as I said, that, that infiltration basin does meet the state's requirements in terms of setback for infiltration structures.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I add something?
Certainly.
Tim, if you go back to the previous, that one with the pictures, yep. So we also...
Oh, the, the one with the photographs?
Yes, right, I'm sorry.
They're all pictures to me.
I'm sorry. They would be too. So we did a couple of things. In, when we get to the section portion of this discussion, we took a section from this corner of the building, right through the basin and down to the wetland in this direction here, which we can talk about, but I wanted to just explain what these photos are, and I, I know they're tough for me to kind of read, but, so this, this area right in here is basically looking in the middle, we're standing in the middle of the pond, if you will, or middle of the basin, and looking out towards this trees, towards these trees here. You can see there's not very much as, as far as significant vegetation. It's mostly brambles and thorns and, and so that was one of the reasons why we chose that area. And then this, this view right here is you can see the back of the, some of the condos through this, through the trees here. This is actually, we're standing on their property in this, in this location here.
The other one.
Excuse me, for, for looking, looking that way. And photo one, which is this one down in the corner, would be where we're here on this edge of the, of the basin here, looking, looking towards them, and you can see it's pretty well screened in here, but you can make out the building right, right here. And I believe this is photo number five, which is at this corner right here, looking into, into the, where the, where the basin is going to be. This, this area here is the open area that's right, right in here, pretty much right there, and this, I don't know if you can make out the fence, but there's a fence that runs right along here. That's really kind of the edge of where the grading is going to start.
So may I ask a question, Ms. Eggleston? Just from the stormwater design point of view, can we go back to this, this one, Tim? You know, this development is mostly over here, and it, and it pulls this storm drainage over here to the acreage that's, that's not associated with the development, and I'm just wondering if that's, if that makes the, the most sense in terms of where to address this stormwater drainage here? Is it, is it really, are there any other options, I guess, you know?
I'm sorry, I think I need some clarification on your question.
Yeah, well...
Now that I'm seeing it up here.
Okay, so, all right, I'm going to just come up here for a minute. The bulk of the development is down here, right? But then the stormwater is being brought over here to, closer to these neighbors, and I'm wondering if, from a overall design point of view, if that's the only location that makes sense for this, or is there a way to think about the stormwater design that doesn't require it to go in that location?
Well, yes and no. Yes, I would agree, and, you know, one of the things that I had suggested in my first review was to do more distribution of, of the runoff in terms of, of on-lot runoff, and they have added roof infiltration structures for each of the roofs. They have conservatively not taken credit for that. They don't have soil testing on every lot and so forth, so their calculations are still, you know, including that. But that certainly helps in terms of, part of, part of the goal of, of the stormwater management for any site should be to replicate as much as possible the existing hydrology. Right now, this is an undeveloped property, so the rain that falls is infiltrating throughout the property and not in one concentrated location. So to the extent that you can compensate for the impervious area that you're adding by putting it back into the ground close to where you're adding it, you're doing a better job of replicating that hydrology. This project is designed with a number of different basins that will function, you know, to manage stormwater. Part of the problem is that, is that because of the location of the wetlands and so forth, they are constrained in terms of where they can actually infiltrate runoff. Sorry, you were going to ask?
I was just going to ask, can, if you could describe for everyone how often these basins will actually contain water, for what period, and kind of at what depth, based on a storm? You know, what type of storm would cause standing water, and how long do we think it would sit there? And then the second question, part of that question would be, when it doesn't have water in it, what is it?
Right. Well, infiltration basins are designed to be fully drained within 72 hours, three days. So, and in fact, that is a red flag if they still have water after three days, and I always require annual inspections after a large storm to determine that they're fully draining. And so that, in terms of neighbor concerns over mosquitoes and so forth, that, it will not hold water that can sustain a breeding population of mosquitoes. The adjacent wetlands, I can't say.
Right.
But the infiltration basin, a properly functioning infiltration basin should not. And for the most part, they operate as, you know, as your lawn does, it's, it's a grassed structure, and the water shouldn't stand there for very long. You know, the small storms will pool, I mean, will probably not pool, the larger storms will, and this is designed for a 100-year storm. We had some discussion about this early in my review because the DEP requirements have not quite caught up to current climate science, and I encourage them to design according to what we all know are the, the current projections for what a 100-year storm is, which is a much larger storm than they were forecasting in the 60s based on the data that they had then. And so they are designing this basin to fully contain a 100-year storm of eight, 8.4, 8.4 inches in 24 hours, which is a very large storm event. You know, I guess if you look at what happened in North Carolina recently, it's not inconceivable. You know, I guess if you look at what happened in North Carolina recently, it's not inconceivable. But this is, you know, designed to completely hold that. So at those times, it would be full, but it should still drain within 72 hours.
And you said it's grass when it's empty?
Yes, it, it should be grass. This, this basin, I believe, will get flow during each storm event. It's getting flow only off of the roadway and, you know, the driveways that are, that are connected to it. And as I said, it's, it's one of several basins.
Tim, can you go back to the slide with the photographs on it? I just want to make sure understanding. So now a question for Mike. Are you now able, you've worked it out, that you can keep some trees? Is that what I'm seeing, where number five is on that plan?
Yes, that's what we are. So the purple trees are the significant trees, trees over six-inch diameter that we located per your request. And then these trees that aren't purple are the ones that we are going to be able to save with this, with the, with the design.
And so now there will be no impact on the stone walls or...
Right. I, I think we had a note on the plan, I may have gotten carried over still, that said basically to maintain any trees that were actually embedded in the wall. That's kind of obsolete now.
Right.
Going to be away from that.
The one thing I will say about that is I had commented previously that I think the first landscaping plan showed trees on the actual edge of the basin. And although it may be preferable from a screening standpoint, structurally, that should not be done on the, on the basin berm itself. So I suggested that they be planted at the base of, and there can be grasses and so forth, but you can't have woody, anything with, with woody roots that could compromise the structural integrity of the basin.
So would the location now of the existing trees interfere, do you think?
No.
Okay.
No.
I have a question. The water moving off of Quissett Brook site will obviously meet the water moving off this site. And the question is whether or not there will be more flow going down, which could possibly back up the water coming off Quissett Brook and thereby...
Right. I don't think, I don't think topographically that it would actually back up the flow coming from Quissett Brook, just because of that topographical difference that, that Mike described. And the whole purpose of the groundwater recharge and, you know, the compensatory recharge and so forth, as, as you know, the stormwater standards require them to mitigate the rate of discharge, the peak rate of discharge. So that's what these basins are intended to do, is to hold the water, bleed it out, or infiltrate it and so forth. The more infiltration they have, the less there would be an increase in the total volume of runoff that's, that's discharged. My understanding is that, I mean, first of all, this is a very large wetland system, relatively speaking. So any, any incremental increase in volume would not be something that's going to back up that wetland system. This is what wetlands do, is they act as sponges to absorb, absorb runoff. And it would, it would take a lot of water to really impact the area of inundation in that wetland. So I think it's very unlikely that it would cause any increase in flooding of the wetland, so to speak.
I also have one more thing to add about that. I didn't mention it, but it is, it is something that exists. So we have the stone wall that divides the property. So the stone wall itself acts, how do I want to say it, like a dam? So I think that's contributing to the issue right in here, that it's not really free-flowing to say when it gets into this area here because the wall is kind of keeping it from getting off their site into, so it's, it's not, it works both ways. Prevent our water from going that way and it's also preventing theirs from coming towards us naturally. Did you want to look at the section?
Whose wall is it?
Ah, split. The property line's right down the middle.
You did do, on the site sections through there, right?
Yeah, I think it's AA. Yeah, I wanted to look at that. Okay, so section AA starts at the edge of the condominium building and it runs towards the basin, which is right in this area here. This is the berm that we've created on the side of the slope to impound the basin, but to confine the basin. And down here would be the wetland that we're discharging into. So you can see that there's like a little ridge here that, you know, for sightlines, for people who are back in the backyard here, have to see over this and with these trees, which are kind of significant, we think, as part of this proposal. And here's where the lot line would be. And you can see there are still some trees that are over the lot line that we're going to try to maintain, or we are maintaining, excuse me.
So that section would seem to indicate that if anything, there's a little slope toward your property from their property, is that right?
That's correct. Mm-hmm. There's a, there's a high spot just off the, off the lot line. And you could see that a little bit in the photos that I took.
Yeah. That's helpful. Thanks for the concentration on that one basin.
So let me see, in terms of my, well, the, the other basin would be basin number five. I don't know if you want to pull that up.
That was five. Base number eight?
I mean, I'm sorry, that was basin five, basin three.
The other way.
Tim, it's, it's, yeah, it's across and down.
Is that on a sheet?
Yeah, first sheet, Tim.
Yeah, it's going to flow.
Go, right there.
Okay. And this one, my concern with it, actually, the soils there are, appear to be great. I'm looking for a little bit more detail on the, on the logs there, but there is, you know, adequate depth to stormwater, I mean, to groundwater, I'm sorry. And the question is just this 50-foot setback because that is tightly squeezed between two wetland systems. But whether or not that ends up being an infiltration basin or some other best management practice that I guess we'll have to be discussing. But it will treat the runoff, a portion of the runoff. So this is the, the second currently proposed infiltration basin. And then the basin at the bottom of the hill is actually the one that...
The other way, Tim.
Are you concerned about the, the wetland on the, on the north side or the south side?
Actually, both of them. The 50-foot...
The ones on the north is only, it is not a state-regulated wetland. It's a wetland that's regulated by the town's wetland bylaw.
Okay.
It's an isolated land subject to flooding and therefore...
Okay.
It meets the town's, the town's wetland bylaw, but not the state.
Okay. Well, and this may be something that ConCom's going to have to deal with.
Yep.
You know, and there are, there are, I will admit, some idiosyncrasies in the, in the stormwater regulations that, you know, some inconsistencies, basically. They prohibit infiltrating the stormwater within 50 feet, but if you were to treat it and then collect it, you could discharge it directly to the wetland. So there are, you know, there's, has to be some common sense approaches that are applied to these. And I'm assuming we will have those discussions. But I think that, actually, it was one of the things that I mentioned to Tim today. I think that the Conservation Commission should also be aware of it because it is in the state regs that they're administering as well. You do definitely have a little bit more leeway with the, with the local wetlands, so that's an important factor.
Can you define the, the outside boundary of the basin? The topmost elevation? Or is it the dotted line where it says infiltration basin?
Actually, that, the dotted line that says infiltration basin is actually just the lowest contour. And then what...
The entire topographical...
Right, well, I, I mean, what, my understanding of the interpretation of what the structure is, is it goes to the top of the berm, which is labeled there, top of berm. I mean, the footprint of the structure actually goes outside of that because the berm slopes down again.
Right.
But my understanding is that it goes to the top of the berm is what that setback is. And one could argue, and I believe that Marshanda is making this point with this particular basin, that in terms of the footprint of where the infiltration actually occurs, it is in between those two 50-foot setback lines. So, and this is where common sense may need to prevail. You know, if the point of this 50-foot setback is to protect the water quality of the wetlands, it's doing that. It's, you know, it still has to travel 50 feet underground before it's going to get to the resource area. Whereas if we called it a bioretention basin and picked up the under drainage after three feet, you could discharge it to the wetland directly. So that's where, you know, I do kind of have to, have to work with the, the regulations a little bit. And in this particular case, I think, I think that this may be surmountable with that one.
That was your, in your email, that was number, numbers two and...
That was number one, actually.
Number one, okay.
Yep. Number two is just having to do with the soil testing that was done for that basin. And I don't know if Mike can answer that.
Typically, when I'm in the field, I kind of get lazy in the writing things and the guys, when I interpreted my notes, they just left it blank.
Okay, so it means it didn't change?
That's right.
Okay. That's, that's what I assumed, in which case it's okay. We logged the, the A test pit of that series, which is consistent with the map soils, but the B and C did not confirm the, the textural analysis. Okay, number three, I believe, is just something that got missed in, in correcting the modeling. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Oh, the exfiltration from basin seven. I think that's been redesigned as an extended detention.
Yes, I think, I hadn't had a chance to talk to Dave, so...
Okay.
I don't want to say, tell you something that's not right.
Okay. And then this other question is just, they've now made these extended, or the other detention basins into extended detention basins as opposed to infiltration basins because they are either too close to groundwater or too close to the wetland. And if, if we can shift down, Tim's not there, but if, if we can just shift, let me see, you're going to be pulling that, you're going to go pull it down.
Mm-hmm.
Because you basically want to go to the top of the page more.
Yep, there it is.
There we go, okay. So up at the top left there is basin number one at the bottom of the hill next to Uncwoodie Road. And the, this entire basin, I guess, is within the 50-foot?
Yeah, I thinks, I, you know, I, I was trying to look at that. I believe that four bay might be out, but I'd have to double check.
Right, I think, yeah, I think the, most of the basin is within 50 feet of the wetland. So it's a matter of how, how they're getting rid of the water and ensuring that it is fully treated by the time it is discharged. And so there, I mean, that's something that I think we still need to have some back and forth discussing, how that is done. And the final component, the final comment is having to do with the, just the treatment train for these basins that are not infiltrating because I'm not convinced that they meet the stormwater standards in terms of the TSS removal requirement. It's, calls for an 80% TSS removal requirement. And right now, Marshanda's calling for the proprietary separators as additional pretreatment devices and then the treatment in the extended detention basin. And it's just a matter of what the TSS removal is that there is being assigned to those proprietary separators. So basically, those are structures that remove a lot of the same grit materials that catch basins do. All of the verification studies that have been done on them are done with raw stormwater. They are not done with water that's coming out of a deep sump catch basin that's already had a lot of that coarse grit removed. And so the question is whether or not it really can remove 50%, and I'm not convinced that it can. So that's something that we will need to discuss further. And if it's not that, then, you know, there are other alternatives that they'll need to address in order to get the treatment train up to 50%.
I have a...
I mean, 80%, sorry.
I have another question, Brian.
Yes.
Where, on this road where, let's say it's a high point at the bottom of the drawing that we see at 64, and then it's dropping down to 44, so 20 feet drop across that, do the, what if, in a hard rain, do those catch basins really going to pick up the flow of water off of that street on that kind of a slope?
I think that those are double catch basins there.
Yes, that's why we did that.
And you can prescribe veined grates as well. You know, there are...
Yeah, so we, we did account for that when we did our design. So you can see here that, well, typically, for, for a section of road of this length, typically, regulations require a catch basin every 300 or 400 feet in the roadway as a rule of thumb. In this case here, you can see we have a set of catch basins here and a set of catch basins here, and the top of the hill is here. So we actually have incorporated more catch basins for that fact. Typically, we wouldn't have that many catch basins. And to add to that, we have doubled up the grates on, on, on the side of the road. Like you see here, there's a single on this side and a double on that side. The reason for that is that this side of the road gets overland flow from above, 10 width, whereas this side only has the shoulder of the road running into the road. So it's not necessary to have two catch basins there. So we have, to answer your question, yes, we have accounted for that.
Tim, can you go to cross-section EE? So when you say it's, I think what, if this, if I've got this correct and which way this is cut...
Yeah, that's, I locked that up right here.
Yeah, so are we looking inward towards the property?
Yes, you are.
Yeah. Okay, so what you were talking about was coming from the left in that section then, right?
Yeah, this is a little too far down the hill to show what I was talking about.
But if that existing grade up there that's marked in dash, is that's the 64, right? So the, the water's going to be coming down through the 44 from that 64, right?
That's not necessarily 64, but it's something like that. In other words, we're coming, we're going way up with this at 8% from this grade here, going up. So that 64, I don't know if that's where the road would be, 64, but eventually it gets to a, a high point in the road.
But I guess, so what's happening is that, that entire cut is going to drain on the surface down to the road, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
So it's going to flow over those walls in a heavy rain?
So this is, this is why I was talking about, like, on this side of the road, as you're, on this side of the site, we have, it's kind of not, not exactly, it's a nice picture, Chris, but I don't want to criticize you. You know, picture this going uphill even further behind this here. So the water would be coming down and getting into the roadway from even above the cut section of the road, whereas on this side of the road, the existing topography is running away from the road. So on this side of the, on this side of the road, you don't really need all the capacity that you need on the upper side. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so if we go back to the plan for a second, like, that kind of a cut, how, what length in that plan do we have that kind of a cut?
So this is the limit of work right here, this dash line that you see?
I see all the stone walls coming this all the way, right?
The cut is going to start, you know, on top. So basically, this is existing grade, this is where the tree line will be when we start to cut the, this portion of the site. So we're going to cut to the top of the wall, so you can see these contours right here and kind of sloping down to the top of the wall from the existing grade. And then we have a vertical face, six-foot face, then six feet of level, or this isn't really level, it's like a foot drop between the walls. And then, we have a vertical face, six-foot face, then six feet of level, or this isn't really level, it's like a foot drop between the walls. And then, six-foot drop again, and now we're at the shoulder of the road, which is what you see in that section.
So what would you say that length is, where you're having that kind of a section?
Right in here, this length.
The length of roadway going that way, where we have that kind of a section.
This is station two right up in here somewhere. Finding it tough to read, yeah.
If you caught up to the grade there by that time?
Station three is right here. So station three is actually, I believe, in a slight, a slight fill, if I remember correctly. So, you know, we're coming up as, as, as quickly as the regulations will allow us.
In terms of roadway?
Yes. And as we get in through this area here, we're actually in a slight fill with the road. We're trying to gain, we're trying to gain as much height in the road as we can so that when we, when we come into the next section of the profile, where the big, where the hill starts to go up again hard, we're not biting off as much out of that, out of that topography.
So this is all, a lot of this is all in the DCR property, is that right?
This is all DCR, from here, from here down to here, yes.
What are their comments on this proposed design through here?
We have designed this based upon the preliminary consultations we've had. We have designed this with that in mind. They would like to see the minimum amount of tree clearing, obviously, so don't we. The consultant, the traffic consultant, has designed this at the minimum width that it can be to be safe. So we talked about a number of waivers that we were asking for. We asked for a waiver from going from, I believe it was 26 feet, it was original, to 24 to 20, which is right now, the major part of this roadway is 20 feet wide. You can see it's 20 feet here, and as we get just past these catch basins, it starts to widen out a little bit. The reason for that is that to provide for a safe travel out of the subdivision, I believe Bob would like to have a right, a mechanism for somebody to go right and somebody to go left. With somebody going right kind of behind them, if they were queued up.
And I think the other consideration is the people traveling on Unquity, taking a right into the drive. He wanted us to have a wider entrance there so that people could safely get off of Unquity in an appropriate timeframe. So he, Bob from, is from MDM, he's our traffic consultant, and he's been guiding us through the, the DCR access permit requirements so that what we're designing here will meet the requirements as he files for the access permit.
If I can ask a question just while we have this up there, Mike, is there any reason that, that lower pair of catch basins couldn't be further down?
So the reason, the reason for that is that when you look at the embankment, we saw the pipes, they're very, very flat, and we've got very, very minimal, actually minimal separation between rim to invert.
So it's a shallow.
We're trying to pull as much as we can into it, but that's what's left over.
All right. What you should be aware of is that the, from that, those catch basins on is going to drain down towards the roadway.
And where does, what happens with two when it gets there?
It falls a curb line into the wetland, into the, into the wetlands here. And there's a gutter on this side that, that it falls into.
So it'll just follow a curve and run in untreated in?
It won't flow across Unquity though?
No.
Won't go onto Unquity, Unquity Road?
It will go onto, it'll, it'll flow onto the, you know, be flowing against the curb line.
Go up to the crown and then it'll go back?
The crown is higher, is higher than the edge of pavement. So it's going to stay along the edge of our curb until it, till the curb stops, and then it's going to flow down this embankment into the, into the swell that's next to the road, like it does today.
Is it a treatment swell or is it just a natural swell?
It's a natural, it's not natural either, yeah, it was done probably by the DCR.
Or it's built up, okay.
Yeah.
So there's, is, would there be any concern about ice over then in the winter months on this?
As far as that lower area?
The lower area?
I mean, proper roadway design, you know, does crown the road to get it off of the, the surface and so forth, so.
So it shouldn't collect down at the bottom at all?
It shouldn't.
Shouldn't run across Unquity at all, you know, until the crown, like, or something?
You know, this is, we're talking about a, a very small, relatively speaking, a small area that would drain. And so it should be able to be contained within the gutter line. I mean, that's not to say if a, you know, if a summer thunderstorm comes, there's something that, you know, bores.
Should also point out that the grade in this section of the roadway is at 3%, not at the 8% that we designed the rest of the road.
What is, what is the grade, right? Excuse me, where your road meets the edge of Unquity?
3%.
No, no, what's the actual grade?
Oh, what's the grade right there? I'm sorry.
43.
48, 46, 45.
Right, right after your last catch.
That first contour is 44, that's a 44 contour.
Right there, but you, you continue on to Unquity Road.
Yeah, that's.
Where is it down there?
It's like 42, 42 and a half, 43.
So it's about a four-foot drop from your last catch basins to the edge of road?
Uh, 43-foot something, yes.
It's 46, your topographical line right after the catch basins is 46, you just said it's 42, so it's 40.
Yep. I could give you the exact number, but I don't have that plan with me.
You, you should almost try to flatten it out after the 44 as you approach Unquity so you don't get a, a stream across Unquity, because then in the winter, you're going to get ice coming.
Yeah, so we, again, we came in at the, at the 3% grade, and then we have a vertical curb that brings, that transitions from the 3 to an 8. That's what you're seeing there where the, where the, where the one, station one is. Can you read that? 42.6. Okay.
This is one area where I think the snow management should be addressed because very frequently icing in the winter comes from snow melt. It does tend to run along the gutter lines if, you know, if they're clear. But with those walls along the side and with the basin on the corner, you're kind of limited as to where you can plow the snow. So that's something that probably you'll want to have the discussion about.
So we have, we have discussed that aspect with the DPW. And you can see that we still have maintained the typical shoulder width here, where we didn't bring the wall right, you know, a couple of feet off the road, and that was the reason we didn't do that. We still have snow storage along here. On this side of the road, we have sidewalk. And to minimize the impact of, of this widening here, we've actually taken the grass strip away from this so that we can have the snow, so we can have room here to, to place the sidewalk in, in that area. So it is, it is an area that we're trying to minimize tree clear. And we're trying to do the right thing and keep it to a minimum.
There were just a couple of other things on my review, if you want me to go ahead with those. And one is the, the ponding area behind lots 15 and 16. And this is just really something that I, I think that they've adequately addressed, but I just want to make sure that the board is aware of it. Do you know which plan that would be?
Second grading plan.
Is this referenced in your letter or is this something else?
It was referenced, it was number nine in my previous, yeah, my original letter.
Keep going, Tim.
Second grading sheet?
Next one, right there, yep.
Yep, there you go. So it's going to be kind of at the bottom of that sheet, between lots 15 and 16. Over to the left a little bit.
Did it get cut off?
Oh, is it?
Hold on two seconds.
Okay, probably if you go to the.
There it is.
Oh, all right, there it is.
Right in here.
Okay. So basically, what's, this is a natural topographical low area that's capturing runoff. And so the drainage design is accounting for that. And there would be slightly more runoff going to that area. So what I had requested was that they ensure that all of that water, if they're going to take credit for the exfiltration and the storage there, to make sure that it doesn't flood onto the adjacent property and that that ponding area be preserved, because they've kind of factored it into the design. So it is within that buffer area that I guess by definition is preserved, that the, you know, the owners of lot 15 or 16 can't go out there and regrade it. But at this point, the increase in a, in a hundred-year storm between what it ponds now and what it would pond is about a half a foot. It goes from 1112.75 to 113.16, according to the calculations. So I guess there is still, I have a little bit of question, and basically, the topography in that area is not that refined. But just to make sure that that is contained on the property, if, I don't really even know what's on the other side of that property and whether that's stone wall, there's a stone wall there too, isn't there?
Can we go to section DD, Tim? Because there's a site section through there too, and I think that might be helpful for us to visualize.
This is where the section is cut.
So the existing home is on the right?
Yeah.
I'll buy it.
Okay, so the.
And the property line is in the middle there, is that right?
This is, this is the others over here.
And everything goes downhill, if that pond overflowed, it would go downhill to the guy next door.
To the next door, right.
So we're looking basically from that low area, is that correct?
This is the, this is the proposed backyard, and this is the existing home this way.
Your pond was just inside the property line.
Right in this area right here.
And I think the other thing that I had a question about, so if you could also, Tim, show that what's off the screen on the left, because the amount of fill being proposed, if that would have a drainage impact on those neighbors. So that's what you're suggesting, that you want to make, have them confirm that it's not going to go beyond the property line?
Well, I mean, I think that they have accounted for that in the, in the drainage analysis. And, you know, basically, that water is currently draining to that location, and more will drain there.
Will it be made worse by having the fill, the amount of fill, is what I want to.
Well, that's, I mean, that is factored into the calculations. And when you say worse, yes, I mean, there will be more water that's going to that spot. So the question is, does it, is it contained on this side of the property boundary? And, you know, I, I know that it is a, a buffer zone, so it's not an area that you want to regrade. And so the, you know, the concern is whether it, is there another house right on the other side? What you don't want to be doing is bonding onto somebody else's property. So at this point, as I said, there is about a half a foot increase in the, in the pooling area. And it's unclear to me whether that would be contained within the stone wall in the property boundary or whether it would.
So we're doing, one of the other things that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's all good.
You know, we have very little flow going into that, in that direction from, from the site, but Lisa is correct, there is still a slight increase in there. But it doesn't account for any of the roofs or anything that we've done on the lots that we've recharged into the ground. We did not take any credit for that. So what the analysis that we've done is a conservative analysis, and it doesn't, it just considers that, you know, if the water fell, it's going to go that way, no other circumstance. So it's really not doing that in the, in the, in the actual conditions. So I just wanted to point that out, it represents a worst-case scenario, if you will.
Would pervious pavement help in, in these areas for these couple of lots?
So that wouldn't help because it's not pavement that's actually running in here, it's the back of the house, the roof of the back of the house.
But it's sloping a lot, isn't it, around the house?
Yeah, the, the actual slope, whether the, whether that's gradual or steep like that, or, but really has no significant bearing on that. It's really the difference between wooded and grass and impervious versus woods. What that, that volume difference would be. Eventually, it makes it to the same spot and gets back into the ground. But it's that Lisa is, wants to make sure that, you know, whatever we do is not going to cause something to happen to somebody that wasn't experienced something. Now, all of a sudden now starts to experience something because of something we've done. And we don't want that either, of course.
Right. Mike does make a good point in terms of the, the roof infiltration units, and it may be that the volume of those, you know, of several of those is more than, you know, the volume increase in volume. I suspect it is, that we're talking about here. And it may be that that's the analysis that they can do to convince me that it's going to be okay. On the, on the roof infiltration units, I, just while we're talking about that, I wanted to mention that to you because I do think that that's something, you know, they, they have a design on the plan for those. I think it's something that, you know, you need to leave a little bit of flexibility in, you know, the specific locations of those as houses get built. You know, I think that the design is for a standard footprint, is that correct?
No, we, we use their biggest footprint on the design.
Okay, the maximum footprint. So maybe, you know, in your conditions, you know, you have something that basically says that this is the roof design based on x square feet. And if somebody builds a bigger house, you know, that they have to build a bigger system. And you require on lot, you know, roof, infiltration of, of roof runoff and to the maximum extent practicable driveway runoff should be, you know, directed to pervious areas on site. Keep this out of the, the roadway.
What about rain gardens next to the driveways, is that advisable?
You know, I, they, I mean, they do work. You know, it, it depends on the grading of the driveways. You know, they work for some, they work for, don't work for others. And, you know, I've seen entire subdivisions designed with a, a rain garden in everybody's front yard. Not everybody buys into that. And, you know, unfortunately, if you're going to design that as a drainage component, you need to basically put a restriction on it that doesn't allow somebody to then go fill it in and, you know, make it something else. And homeowners sometimes like that flexibility. So, but you can certainly, you know, look for driveway runoff to be directed. And, and I think that to the extent that you provide flexibility, you know, you can give people a standard rain garden design or an infiltration trench design. Driveways, you know, we're not talking about a whole lot of water if you just direct it onto pervious area. It should, for the most part, infiltrate. And these are decent soils.
So I would like to add that during this process with the Conservation Commission and yourselves, there was mention of stormwater quality as far as nutrient loading. And so in this design, we did try to incorporate rain gardens, and there is one proposed in the back of lot number 12, which is protected by an easement. Tim, if you went back to that grading plan, it showed that depression, there it is. So that would be this area right here. This is intended to be a rain garden, which will then discharge into this basin after, after it's been treated. And also on the front of the site, we have the infiltration basin that will also remove those types of pollutants also. So we're, we're trying to keep that in mind, and we're trying to do that wherever it's practical.
Can you just scroll up that little ponding area that we've been talking about for a little bit here? So you, so you're saying that the, the additional driveway there, it looks like there's some kind of utility easement or something there, but the driveway's grade in the house right off the cul-de-sac there, which I can't tell if it's 15 or something. That, that, that the water runoff to that naturally ponding area isn't going to increase a little bit?
Yeah, so that driveway is not intended to drain in that direction, Mike. It's draining towards the common driveway, which is in, which is in this direction. And that may be, as a point of discussion, something that you can condition also that, so that, although Pulte intends to do that, that this driveway does pitch in this manner, that's how it's designed. Same thing with this one, this one's going in this direction also. So the only thing that we have kind of going into this bowl that's, is the backyard, a sliver of the backyard here, and a portion of this, this building here, and a portion of this building in the back.
You're building that area up by about, about 15, 15 to 20 feet?
Yeah, the, again, the fill itself is just a way of regrading. If we did no filling in the back and just let the. If we did no filling in the back and just let the buildings do what they do, it would end up in the bowl. Just different direction, taking a different direction.
Steep the hill isn't going to cause the water to run there faster, or more volume?
Again, it, it might increase the rate of runoff, how it gets to the bowl, but
I'll, I'll cut to the chase. Of all the drainage that you've discussed tonight, that, that seems to be the biggest concern I see right now. I mean, if that, if I lived on the other side of that and I find that that ponds in that area and flows towards me sometimes, I would have a fear that obviously, it's not going to get better.
So the water doesn't flow towards anybody? It sits in the bowl?
Well, yeah.
I think the question is whether, will the bowl fill up and then flow that way, right?
Will it be a bigger bowl?
On the other side of it, it goes, it continues to go downhill, so I
It's, it's level.
I don't know. I mean
So while we're on that area, too, just real quick, because of the drainage question there, too, would be the other section, that CC that's cut.
If I can interrupt for just one second, just to complete the thought.
Sure, go ahead.
At the property line where that natural low point is, your elevation shows to be about 100 and, 113, 114. In the back of the guy's house, it's 110. So it's, it's going downhill.
It does go down as, as it goes into the, into the man's yard. But there's definitely a ridge right along the property boundary, and the wall itself, like I said, acts like a dam also.
I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, I'm just saying, it seems to me that of all the things you've accounted for, that just, I'm not overly confident that that's definitively possible.
One of the ways that perhaps you can address this, I do think that this is, to some extent, a conservative analysis. Basically, what Marshawn is doing is they are assuming that all of the runoff from the driveways and the roof areas, correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't think we're accounting for any driveways going down in there from our proposal.
I'm, I'm sorry, going into the drainage system.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
Going into the drainage system. And, and so they're, they're accounted for in the drainage analysis. And you take a hundred-year storm over that area, and you're dealing with a lot of water that you have to find places. So it does make all of these basins that they proposed a little bit bigger. If you were to require that they take the approach that the runoff and the roofs, roof runoff from the driveways and the, and the roofs be completely contained on each lot, then I think it would be reasonable for them to take those out of the calculations. And, you know, some of those drainage components could, in fact, get a little smaller. There may be certain areas where it, just from a grading standpoint, you can't get the driveways that are draining down onto the, to the roadway. You need to account for that. And there are a couple of lots where there may not be suitable soils for infiltration. But probably, a lot of these lots, you could take out of that total number if you were to take that approach, where you basically required that they handle it on, on site.
So I'm going to ask that we, it looks like there's going to be some more back and forth between anyway, so I'd like to move on from the stormwater, just because we have
Can we just look at that one section, though? CC, will be the last one that has that stormwater potential to go towards the butters, I think?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So again, here where the proposed fill is so much greater here on the left, is that going to have, do you see any impact for the butter? I'm sorry, where on the property is this?
This is section, this is section that goes down the common driveway. So right here, it starts at the end of the cul-de-sac and runs down here, and then we come right down the lot line to the, to the butters' house, which is right here. So we have proposed in the, in the, so here's the, here's the common driveway area up in this area here. Tim, could you go back to the grading plan, just quickly? So the water is proposed to run down the driveway and pitch to the left, where it's going to collect in these depressions that we've got in the front yards here and here. This, this driveway will pitch down here and into here. This will pitch down in here, and these are all designed to pitch into there. So from there, they are piped to the rain garden, and that's where that water will be treated. So the rest of the section is the high spot, probably right off the corner of this house, at Station 2. This, this is where the grade will start to pitch towards the back. So you will get the rear of this house and the backyard in this area running down to the bottom of the slope.
You didn't account for those?
And we did account for that, yes. Sorry.
And it also drains into that buffer area, which gives it a fair, fair stretch for it to infiltrate.
Right. So that's what you're seeing at the base of the backyard right here. So from somewhere right around here, the lawn will pitch down to this place here, and then it, then it runs towards the wetland that is located closer to the town's property.
Okay, thank you. The only other thing on the drainage that I did want to bring to your attention, or just to mention, is in terms of who's responsible for maintaining the drainage system, because I, I thought it was a little unclear, and I don't know whether everybody is on the same page on this. But basically, what the O&M plan is, is calling for is for the town to maintain the street drainage, the drainage that's actually within the street, and actually, it does say connected to the road drainage, which I think maybe needs some clarification. My understanding is that there will be a homeowners association. I just think it's important to kind of lay this out upfront, because, and also to confirm if the town is expected to maintain the road drainage, that this is something that, that they can maintain. Many towns don't have the vector equipment necessary to maintain the proprietary separators that are proposed for this. So that would need to be verified with the DPW, that it's something that they're willing to take on. And just to clarify, who would be maintaining what?
That's a good point, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on from stormwater, thank you.
Okay, do you need me to stick around, or?
I don't think so. If there are further questions, we'll make sure that we record them for you for the next round.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else the board wants to specifically focus on that was submitted to us? We have a lot of materials here. We have a Quissetbrooke letter, which I think hopefully mostly was answered by some of the testimony we just heard. We have a traffic memo addressing the comments that came in before. We have the 100-foot buffer language that hopefully people have had a chance to review. I'm sure we'll be having more discussion about that in a few minutes. And we have the DPW sign-off. We go to public?
I did have a couple of comments on the, the language on the buffer. Let me find it here. I didn't see where there's a recourse if trees are removed. And I'm wondering if we could have something which would say, for every tree removed, it would have to be replaced. I mean, that would be, I mean, right now, it's left to the town enforcement officer, but what's, what really are they going to do if a tree's down, right? I mean, if a tree's been taken down in that protected zone. So, so that was a question I had. And then, and on the second page, under the restrictions in the 60-foot wide, also, where there's restrictions about swimming pool, tennis courts, et cetera, I was wondering whether we should have a restriction for fill and regrading in that area. And I question whether a permitted, that fences and signs should be permitted in that area, which currently are shown as being permitted in that area.
Okay, I have very similar comments. That's, that's great, thank you. The regrading, especially with the testimony we just had.
And with respect to the DPW approval, it seems to me we should ask the DPW if they're prepared to, at the town's expense, maintain this drainage system.
I agree.
And I think that they, they maybe should get a little bit of a description about what they would be doing.
Have you had conversations with DPW, Ben?
Yes. Essentially, the way I understand it, or the proposal, the way we portrayed it, was that they would basically be taking care of the catch basins, and the stormwater, the water quality units and the detention basins would all be maintained by the homeowners association. So the only maintenance the town would be incurring would be street sweeping, like they normally do with any other road, clean and catch basins, like they normally do. And anything else, we would, we would have the homeowners take care of.
Okay, so we may want to just make that language clear for, for Lisa and for the application. All right, I'm going to move to the public, and then we'll hear from you again as necessary. So if you don't mind stepping back so the public can have room. And start with Mr. Sweeney.
Good evening, Rob Sweeney, Indian Cliffs Association president and a neighbor of the town, fun. I appreciate Mr. Mastriani representing Pulte tonight. I appreciate the fact that he made some conciliatory comments regarding the 100-foot buffer. If I heard him correctly, he said he now gets 100 foot by 40 foot of open space owned by the homeowners association, and then an additional 60 feet for what he termed a restricted tree-cut area. And that equals 100, 40 plus 60, and that's good, but that immediately raises fuzzy language to me, when, when a 60-foot area is called a restricted tree-cut area. And then the suggestion was made to you that in that 60-foot area, that there wouldn't be swimming pools, tennis courts, et cetera. I would like to suggest, going fast forward, if this planning board decides to grant Pulte the special permit to build its cluster development, which I believe will be the first of its kind in Milton, with the homeowners association that is not, we're not too familiar with, in Milton, I'd like to suggest that, I know that the terms and the conditions need to be detailed, and that's going to be the responsibility of the planning board. I definitely feel that this is a project that requires deed restrictions, absolutely. So I'd like to suggest that in the final analysis, if the special permit is granted for Pulte to build 23 homes on 30 acres of land, that an agreement be entered into with four parties. And those four parties would be the Milton Planning Board, Pulte Homes of New England, Quissetbrooke Association, and Indian Cliffs Association. I mention those two associations because those are the direct butters, the people most affected, and I think it's the responsibility of the planning board to protect the interests of this town, and you need to start with protecting what's in the best interest of the property owners closest to the new development. And this suggestion would be that there's an agreement signed between the four parties, that it gets filed in the court, each party signs the agreement, a representative of the two associations, the planning board chairman, and probably Mr. James McCabe, Pulte Homes of New England. To make sure that there's nothing fuzzy, you know, to me, like I mentioned a few minutes ago, a 60, to get to 100, you go 40 open space makes sense, 60-foot restricted tree-cut area raises fuzziness. I think it's the responsibility of the planning board to make sure that if you do give the permit, that it's clear, it's cut, and that it's enforceable, and starting with, with the court's, court situation. And what I'm suggesting is something that has been done before by the planning board, and Mr. Whiteside was a party to my suggestion in, in another area. And I think that will give all the director butters in Indian Cliffs, which is about 165 homes, and Quissetbrooke, which has 56 residents, I think it would give those, those folks peace of mind. Thanks.
Really? So there is a 100-foot buffer language. I don't know if you've had a chance to see it. It would certainly be helpful for you to take a look at this with your neighborhood association. I'm going to make the same recommendation to Quissetbrooke, and take a look at the language, and understand what's in the language, and then bring comments back to the board, because this is really the framework of what you're talking about.
Yes.
And whether it's an agreement between the parties, or it's an exhibit to the special permit, or actually included in the special permit, that will be the, the basis upon the exact sort of document that you're speaking of. So this is drafted, this is drafted by the applicant. It would be helpful for you and the associations to review it.
Okay.
And this is available, Tim, on our website.
It will be.
It will be after tonight's hearing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, come forward, please.
I'm Judy Sweeney, 29 Quissetbrooke Road. I really, first of all, I appreciate the work that's been done, both by the board and, and by Pulte, in terms of trying to make some accommodations for Quissetbrooke. I did, however, have several questions, just so, from our perspective, we're sure that we're all on the same page, that I understand the flow. I guess I'd start with the flow chart, and I'm not sure what exhibit, Tim, it is, but it's, it shows the flow away from Basin 5 down, and then it looks like it shows from Preacher, the houses or the units in Preacher Road back. And the reason that I, I start with that is because I've been schlepping around the woods for two days in my boots, trying to figure this out. So the first question I have is, is this just, this flow from the basin down along the line, down towards Quiddie, is, is that just a natural buffer that you're seeing? I mean, that's the natural landscape of where the water would flow?
So you're talking about these arrows?
Mike, can you, can you grab the microphone?
Yep. There's no, I mean, there's no, is a natural gully, is what you're saying, that flows down that way?
If you were to walk over the wall, and at the top of the, you know, this wetland here is rather flat, and when you get to here, you can drop down, and you see all the stones that were, the dirt has been kind of eroded away over the years to create the channel, which keeps it basically in that narrow band right there.
So where are you coming out in terms of the basin to actually hit that flow?
Right over here. So it's going to be coming out this way, getting into this, this area here, and then when it, when it builds up enough, it'll flow down the hill. And then when you get to the bottom of the hill, you can see the, the channel that's been created over time.
Yeah, you can see it further down the hill. It's not as obvious at the top.
Right, because it's rather flat here.
Right.
So going to tend to spread out a little bit, and then, but it always, you can see the channel flowing all the way down, and then it gets into this area here and flows down. Now, it does flow across your property in this little area right here, before it gets down Quiddie Road.
Okay. The other flow from Preacher Road at the top, going this way, I mean, that, that elevation can't be much more than a foot or something. I mean, it's not really, it looks very flat. If you climb down there, which I have done, it goes from about 118 feet down to 80 feet from that
From up here.
Right, from up there down. So it's a very steep drop.
Right.
And then that area, which is kind of a natural swale or a gully,
Yep.
Doesn't look like there's much of a way for it to flow back.
Not much pitch, but it is pitched, and that's what I think is some of the root of the problem that you're having, is that the water is coming down here from all these buildings, coming down to a spot where it's kind of level, so the water's going to come down fast, and then slow down, and kind of sit in here. And then your buildings, as far as elevation between here and here, not much at all.
So you, you're confident, then, that the flow coming out of the basin down the hill is not going to backflow into that area and make that worse?
That's correct.
And how can you, what may lead you to that conclusion, I guess? What's in the way of it backflowing? Do you know what I'm saying?
So a couple of things. You, you mentioned the word backflowing like it happens normally. Something has to block it if you want it to make it backflow. So there's no, there's no impoundment, there's, this is all a natural channel. So there's no, there's no impoundment, this is all a natural channel where the water gets confined and moves through.
So the water would have to get more than a foot to go flow the other way?
I would say more like six or eight inches before it started to move towards your direction here. Maybe even more than that, maybe it would be a foot. Like I said, this wall acts like a dam.
It's not much of a wall anymore. It's a bunch of crumbling rocks.
You can see a couple of double lines in some of these plans. There's actually a water line that comes from your development, and I believe it ends right here. I think somebody may have created that, built that in anticipation of maybe extending the water through this property at some point or to it for some reason, but they've altered actually this area right in here, and this is now higher than this area.
Yeah, they created a berm going across those buildings on the left-hand side, but there's not any, I mean, it's pretty flat right there all the way.
Right through here, yep. And that's a little higher than this right here, which, you know, if I would guess, if this wasn't put here, wasn't placed here, this water would have continued down this way like this instead of going out like that.
Maybe, maybe, I don't know. It looks pretty natural down there as you slip through there. So there, that's one concern is, you know, if there's any kind of additional water being added to that area. The other question I had is, in your calculations, there's all these development up in the area, up at the top, right at the bottom there, yeah, there's houses there. When you do those calculations, you do it for storm, do you ever take, do you take into consideration, is there an assumption that any irrigation system they put in is not going to add to that water?
So.
Do you know what I'm saying? Or any pool going to add to that water?
Well, the pool definitely wouldn't do that because there's, you know.
Well, you'd be dispersing the land again.
Nah, I think what you're trying to envision is maybe a pool being in, a pool of groundwater or something like that and displacing the water, is that what you're trying to say?
Correct.
Yeah, so this, the groundwater up in this area here, this is so much higher than this, than the wetland here, that there really isn't anything like that happening.
More concerned with the flow into the basin, the main basin, because although, one of the pictures that you showed, showed an elevation, I guess, if you look at the four pictures or the five pictures that you took, this photo four shows, you're sort of looking at it back, item three, towards the, and I would agree that there's a bit of a hill there. There's also a really flat piece of land that goes right from the edge of sort of that land where the wall is. And it goes, it really is, if you can see it in the picture, it's very flat and then goes down to those houses, that second row of houses that would be right there. So this is very flat and then goes downhill, starting about right there.
Right. So this basin that we're proposing here, it's actually, I use the word, it's in a cut. So it's actually being lowered in elevation on this embankment here, so that this is actually depressed. On this side of the basin, we have a cut, meaning it's depressed below the ground elevation that's there now, and on this side is where the fill is, on the lower end. So we're trying to, if you picture it, if it's on a slope, we're trying to level it out, so we're cutting on the far side and filling on the other side.
And then there was just one other thing. In terms of, I think we talked about the impact of snow. So your, the calculations for the storm also includes whatever, you know, we had that 109-inch storm, which would sit in that basin for a while.
So, you know, one of the things we're talking, you know, we're, yes, it does. Let me just say that.
And the calculations consider the amount of snow as a potential?
The difference between storm to storm is what it is. You know, what we do is we model a storm or a number of storms up to the 100-year storm, and if, like today, you could get two inches of rain, tomorrow you could get three. Doesn't really say anything about either storm, except that one was bigger than the other.
Except snow tends to not go away so quickly.
So I'm going to just caution, we're just getting a little bit on these. And I let you get away with it because it was interesting and I think it was helpful, but I got to reel you in a little bit.
All right, and then I just have one.
If there's further questions, though, you can put them in the record and then we'll make sure that they're addressed.
Okay. So the, no, I just, I just have one more, and that is on the buffer, that 100-foot buffer that we're going to be able to get a look at probably tomorrow. What, does that apply to the basin? Because I'm hearing that now there's a 10-foot buffer from the basin, not a 100-foot buffer on the basin?
That's correct. As proposed, this plan is showing a 10-foot buffer, that's correct.
So that doesn't apply to Quisset Brook, at least from the base, as a result of the basin?
If I may. We haven't been showing the actual buffer line along that property because our property doesn't, for the most part, really border the Quisset condos. The Town Farm property really does for, for the majority of the discussion. Really, the only construction or aspect of our property that is near their property line is the basin that we spent so much time talking about. And the buffer is the basin, that is open space area, which would be part of the open space of the homeowners association, which would be put under the conservation restriction that we've talked about for the other basins. And so there is a 100-foot buffer along that property line. It consists of the Town Farm property, and it consists of the stormwater basin, the grass stormwater basin with, that we've modified in order to preserve the existing trees for screening along the property line, which we demonstrated in sections, that has no real visual impact from the neighbor. I hope we were able to show that. And then the remaining part of the open space, which was remaining undisturbed. So I do believe we provided a buffer for them.
They're talking about the 100-foot buffer between the Pulte project and the abutters. They're not talking about having a 100-foot buffer on the town's property to anybody. I mean.
That's correct. So.
The town didn't agree to do a 100-foot buffer.
I understand. So the only area that there's a 10-foot buffer is just.
That.
Right there.
Right there.
This is all the existing town.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand that.
So it is a 10-foot on that, on that open space which is being used, but there's no building in that area?
But in that 10-foot buffer now, they can retain trees. I don't know if you were here to hear that earlier, that discussion, but, which wasn't the case, I think, the last time they were in.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's what's proposed.
Well, we still have some concerns, but that's, we're getting there.
Anyone else? Ma'am in the back, yep, you were first. Get to everybody.
Good evening, and thanks for this opportunity to speak. My name is Laura Beebe. I am a resident of Milton, I live at 1514 Canton Avenue. However, I'm here tonight to represent the Friends of the Blue Hills, for which I serve as vice president of the board. We're a 1,000-member organization with a mission to protect and preserve the Blue Hills Reservation. The Friends of the Blue Hills opposes the proposed curb cut and road through DCR property on the grounds that the cut would, one, disrupt a valuable buffer zone, two, direct additional traffic into an already busy area, and three, cause substantial disruption of the habitat dangerously close to existing wetlands. Additionally, roads of this kind create fragmented habitats. Fragmentation has well-known adverse effects on biodiversity, harming migration patterns and destroying the connectivity needed by natural populations to survive. We, the Friends of the Blue Hills, feel compelled to give our voice in support of these natural areas and hope road access will not be allowed through our forested habitats. So, that's it for me.
Thank you. Sir, you were next.
Paul O'Gratt, 25 Quisset Brook Road. I'm in one of those condos that you just guaranteed won't get any effect of groundwater or runoff, so I'm really happy to hear that.
I didn't guarantee anything.
No, you said. I just wanted to point out that we spent a good deal of time recently taking about a 50 or 60-foot swath of vines out, that had taken down six major trees and about 20 other ones. The vine population in that area is going to be really a problem. And when I look at that tag, holding tag, I almost wish you'd take the trees out, because then the vines won't disrupt it. And as I heard, this nice lady made a comment, that she said the only problem that could happen with building that concrete holding tag could come from roots, and I assume that includes vines. Some of the vines I took out, I needed a chainsaw to cut them down. I'm not sure it's even been looked at, but if you, and that 100-yard, 100-foot barrier you have down in the bottom part, 10 years, you know, you're not going to have a chainsaw in there, you're just going to have a pile of lines. It's happening all over the Blue Hills. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, no one speak now? Okay. So I think we'll be looking to, is anything else from the applicant tonight?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think we heard all of the comments very clearly, right, that we discussed. Appreciate the comments.
Can I actually make one additional comment?
Yeah, let's go to the board now, yep.
On the traffic memo, which I didn't see until tonight, so I apologize, I didn't mention this earlier. Comment T7 about bicycle trip generation, and then T8 is also on bike safety. There's a mention of this particular area of Uncwitty Road having 10 times lower than the statewide average of crashes, which I think is probably in part because there's no intersecting roads. And now if we're going to be creating an access to a new development, that could potentially change. This is a very, very heavily biked area because of the Blue Hills and advertised as such by DCR. And I'm just making a note that I don't doubt the data that's here, but I don't doubt that that will change with more cars coming in and out of an intersection, intersecting roadway. And I'm deeply concerned about bicycle safety in this area. I've driven up and down a couple of times in the last day where you're marked, and there's a pretty sharp turn just before you get to what your entrance will be as you're coming from Canton towards Canton Ave, so with your access on the right. And I'm just concerned about bikes coming down there quickly and not seeing the access or cars not seeing bikes come out of the access point. I make it as, just a note.
Certainly appreciate your comment and your note, and I just, I'll speak a little bit, but I'm hesitant because our traffic engineer from MDM could speak a lot more eloquently and accurately than I can. And so there's, if there's ever a time that you'd like to speak with him, he's more than willing to come in and answer any questions that the board has.
Great.
So he's been doing it through memos, but he's, he's happy to come in and answer your question. But he has done a traffic impact analysis, and one of the aspects of that analysis is to look at the stopping site distance and the stopping site distance and the other site distance, that there's two names of them. And both of those site distances have been looked at and meet the requirements of DOT and also for DCR. So we feel very comfortable that we've located the access drive exactly where it needs to be to make the site distances work for both the left, if looking left and looking right, and also for drivers on Uncwitty Road coming around the bend at both bends. So that has been analyzed. And as far as the bicycle safety, you know, we did look at that because that was one of the concerns we talked about. And, you know, Bob's answer to that is that DCR has specific requirements or standards for bike lanes, which have been recently striped out on Uncwitty. But then also our entrance drive will have signage and will have striping and will be in conformance with DCR requirements, and that was our response to that.
I think one suggestion I might have, and maybe this is something I should take up with DCR when we get to the point of moving forward, but when you come around that bend towards, going towards Canton Ave, towards your driveway, if there could be some additional mitigation or signage to alert people that a driveway is coming up, I think that would be helpful.
So part of our plan, and I think I understand the exact corner, but part of our plan to achieve the site distance is there's a ledge outcrop, or there's a big boulder right at the pinch point of the term, of the turn. And the proposal on our plans and also in our DCR application is to remove that corner, where, remove the rock. And when you redo that, that you will then gain, you will achieve the site distance that you would expect.
Thank you.
Cheryl.
Yeah, just on that same note, I actually spent some time walking up and down Uncwitty to see what that's like and what it would be like when a roadway's there. And I have to say, even though it was a weekend, I was always looking around because I didn't feel quite comfortable that a car wasn't going to come over towards the side of the road. So I wonder, Tim, can you put the plan back up? Whether that emergency access up to the Town Farm part that's remaining with the town and then over to Governor Stoughton Lane could be a pedestrian and bicycle access rather than a vehicle access? I mean, I know it's not a vehicle access, it's an emergency vehicle, but I'm wondering if we can make that right there, the open space parcel three, I guess, could that become a bicycle and pedestrian access? And I'm thinking also if there are going to be families here, and if they're going to walk, they're probably most likely to walk that way rather than walk down Uncwitty, unless maybe they're walking to the ice, to the ice rink. But if they're going up to the schools, they would probably walk that way, and it would be a safer way to walk than walking on Uncwitty.
Schools and the fields and everything in that direction, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. We can, we can look at that and talk about that and respond. Mike?
There's just, on the, the traffic comments is one thing that just kind of blew me away, and you'll be, you'll be happy for this one, Joe. In response to one of the questions, he says, furthermore, despite the historic records showing flat or declining traffic growth in the area, being a resident in the area for the past 18 years, I just, I just don't understand how we can, what historic records show that the traffic is flat or declining? I'd like to see those. Like I commented before, I don't know if it was this project, when I first moved to Milton, there was a stop sign at Canton Ave and Blue Hills Park, or Uncwitty. And now, now there's a traffic signal and it backs up, and I can't get out at the end of my street. But this says the traffic is flat or declining. I don't know. It kind of undermines everything else I read there when I read that he says that. I don't understand that.
So it sounds like it may make some sense for, it sounds like there's some questions for traffic that it may make some sense to have your engineer here at the next meeting.
If he, if he shows up, I'd just like to bring the backup for that. I just, it just blows me away that that's even possible.
Sure, we can do that.
Any else, Mike?
Well, if he comes, I think that we'll have some questions for him.
Very good. I'm going to withhold any questions I have for another hearing. So, Tim, can we get a date from you, please?
So.
One thing, the idea of separating the buffer into an open space component and an easement component is, you know, I think it's possible, but obviously the legal language and the legal enforceability is something that the neighborhood association or the owners and the condo association should take a look at because it's going to be, it's going to be a recorded restriction, and so it needs to be, it needs to have teeth. And it's important, and the provisions in it need to be sensible, thoughtful, and affect the purpose. So people should not overlook that.
I can't believe this would be overlooked, to be honest.
I just, last comment, I thought I heard it mentioned a deed restriction. Could it be a deed restriction on each individual lot?
I think that's what was suggested.
Yes, absolutely, it would be in the lot.
So each individual lot would.
Each lot deed would include that language, yes.
But it might be, it might be a reference to a document, a recorded document.
So you are, that's back to what you're getting, the specifics of that.
But I don't know. I mean, all I'm saying is that whatever it is, it needs to work.
Needs to be real.
Three to eight.
So October 27th, the only thing we have scheduled is 7:15, continued public hearing for cluster development at 245 Highland Street.
Okay.
So 7:30.
Sounds great.
We don't get to go before them again?
Sorry.
I'd like to go in first tonight. Thank you.
So I can't be at the next hearing.
I know.
But I'm hoping that maybe I can talk with MDM offline, if that's okay, and ask about bikes.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe you can help me connect, Tim?
And it would be helpful if any questions you ask him, you ask him to put into the record in his response when he's here.
Sure.
So that you can then watch it on video.
Or I can even write up my questions. Or I can even write out my questions. Yeah.
You might leave us with your questions too, so we...
Yeah.
Yeah, she just said that, specifically what you've asked.
You've made all these hearings.
Thank you.
I have.
They're already gone, I guess, I'm not to thank them. All right. We're going to open, and then very quickly continue the 7:30 public hearing for...
Thanks.
I just closed my agenda up. For the Carrick Realty Trust Special Permit for Central Ave Plan Unit Development 131 Elliot Street, continued from September 22nd. Can I get a motion to continue that hearing?
So moved.
Seven forty-five?
I haven't finished quite yet. I was going to, I was going to suggest November 10. What's on it for November 10?
Why don't we do it next time?
I'm going to do it next time.
And then we can continue it again.
You need to. Okay, fine. So, 7:45 on October 27th.
Good idea.
So, moved by April as a modified. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor.
Mike's got it. Hi.
Hi, great, thank you.
Sixth of December.
I understand. Well, we won't let them get away with the thing.
I don't have a signature for it, so the clock is running.
What's...
All right. But just, you know, if we close the hearing...
What hearing?
The Carrick hearing.
Oh, yeah.
If we were to close it, then we'd have, would be under a time constraint.
Right.
But I think, Tim and Bill...
You have a time constraint now since you opened the hearing.
But I think that we're going to ask Town Council perhaps where the ninety days runs from.
Were they requested it?
Because we think it runs from the close.
Yeah, they requested the delay, didn't they?
All right.
Well, it's important to get that answered because if we need to, we'll, you know, we'll have to deny the application.
If it's December, if it's December 5th or, or allowing...
Either way, it's not October 27th.
I mean, we can do, we can do what, if, if we have to do something on December 5th, we'll do it.
Will we ask for a continuance?
I don't think, I don't think that we have to because I do think it runs from the close of the hearing.
All right. Tim, can you please get a...
A reading.
Read on that for us before the next hearing?
Well, the hearing ran, uh...
Before the next continuance.
Three years ago, that hearing ran for over a year, didn't it?
They signed, they signed off on the continuances.
On that, okay.
All right. I've hopelessly lost my agenda, so...
Here, take it.
Next up is going to be A&R 1259 Brush Hill Road Residential Double A, A&R lots from a 13.74 acre parcel. Please come forward. Oh, I know where it is. It's under the plans. Under the plans.
Right, there it is.
Ms. McCetrick, you have the floor.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann McCetrick, representing the applicants for this A&R plan request for plan, plan approval. And tonight, I have with me David Crispin, the engineer for the project, who is going to do the presentation because a lot of the questions relate to the right-of-way roadway. Also with me is Matt Scheller from the Scheller family, who lives in the residence that's already on this property. So, I'd like to turn it over to David Crispin, unless the board has other questions for voting again.
I'm trying to be very brief. Brief, good evening. I have eleven slides up here.
On the desktop?
Oops. There'll be a PDF up there.
A&R plan.
Yeah, that's it. There we go.
Thank you.
And as the first one, you're familiar with, that's the, the plan, it's on two sheets that you have, but that's the, this site. Hemingway Drive is across the top. And my letter that I submitted to you is primarily in response to the Hemingway Drive Committee's letter of a few days ago.
Sorry, excuse me, just one second. The letter dated October 13th?
Dated October 13th, yes. Rather than go through that in great detail, I've got eleven slides that summarizes this quite quickly. I think many of you were on the site walk. We walked along the, from the upper right-hand corner down to the left edge, back up through the middle, and then back up Avenue A across the bottom and saw that. So, if you can click the next one for me. There's been discussion about what areas of the site are restricted by the book 4429 restriction. This afternoon, I finally got through, after reading all of those, they talked about land in Canton being subject to this. This little sketch, and I apologize, this is a screenshot of a CAD file, so you get some black, black corners on it. All of the information to the left that has those red lines about it are the various parcels that are included in the land restriction. Our parcel is in the upper right and is not in that restriction. So, I, I think that should be made clear from the beginning. Next slide. You have in front of you the A&R plan that basically asked you to determine whether the existing roadway is adequate. There are three factors for adequacy. Grade, which is the slope of the road, width of the road, and construction. So, I'd like to walk through those three factors for you. Slope is the easiest one. Your subdivision regulations currently say maximum of eight percent. Hemingway has a six and a half, Hemingway has a five percent. So, that's a very easy one. That's easy compliance. The width of the road, this is a little bit trickier. The access to the site is limited by two gates that are measured at fifteen foot clear. The one on the left is the Canton end, the one on the right is the Milton end, and in the middle, there is a pair of stone pillars with a wooden gate. All three of those have a fifteen foot opening. So, that's what's restricted, is the bottlenecks coming in and out. Next slide, please. Your subdivision regulations do not have a standard other than the standard subdivision road. So, I'm trying to get a feeling for, you know, what's, what's an acceptable roadway. Didn't have to look very far, I looked into Canton, right next door. Canton has residential lanes, which are low intensity roadways. They have an eight-foot travel lane with a one-foot shoulder and a vertical granite curb. That's a total of eighteen feet wide. Our driveways are twelve to fourteen feet, and the difference is, we don't have granite curbs, we have a three or a four-foot grass shoulder for the most part, not everywhere. So, I would suggest, from a comparable point of view, at least there is some guidance on what is acceptable. Next slide, please. This is a rather creative piece of photograph, but this is taken very near the Scheller's home on Hemingway Drive. That yellow line is my tape measure going across, it's fourteen feet of pavement. The black blob in the corner is the bumper of my car. You can see it's on the pavement, and there is eight feet to the left of that. You can also see in the bottom photograph, the fourteen feet of pavement with the mowed shoulders, which my client actually mows himself. Other than a hundred and fifty foot stretch of that driveway, a roadway that comes up, where the wetlands are fairly close to the, to the road, the rest of that has that type of shoulder, which allows passing vehicles to pull over a little bit, and I, I know what happens. It's a pretty accepted fact. Next slide, please. We did take a look at the fire truck entrance coming in off of Brush Hill Road. This is an AutoCAD auto turn chart, basically, and it shows you that a fire truck can come in. Mr. Scheller tells me there was a fire truck down there just the other day and turned around. So, the graph tells it, and the fire department tells it, and I believe, Bill, you met with the fire department today as well, you can comment on that later. Next slide, please. There was a lot of conversation in the committee's, call it the committee, the Hemingway Drive Committee's letter about cut-through traffic and traffic problems on the roadway. So, we actually sat out there yesterday from three o'clock to six o'clock during rush hour, and we counted a total of seventeen vehicles in that three-hour period that went up. And this is broken down by eastbound and westbound. Obviously, in the afternoon period, there were five cars at three to four, and seven cars from, they all say three to four. Three to four is the top one, that's my typographical error, four to five and five to six, seven cars. Two of those vehicles went to the Scheller's house. So, that's an automobile about once every ten and a half minutes. Not what I would consider a very heavily traveled road and leads heavily to the accuracy of the road. Next slide, please. Oh, just as a, as a comment back, the, the blue dot in the upright-hand corner, a little tough to see on this, that is the Canton end of Hemingway Drive. And I think you can see, you're fairly close to 128. Depends on where you're going to go with this cut-through traffic, but I actually took a MapQuest from that point and went up 128 and into south, into Boston. It's supposed to be a thirty-five minute ride. And then I took the same thing from Hemingway Drive at the Brush Hill Road end, and did the same route, and I came up with thirty-two minutes cutting through and doing the lights going up through town. So, the value of the cut-through may be psychological more than, than reality. Next slide, please. I did do an interesting exercise, and this really doesn't apply because you have your zoning, we meet the minimum frontage, we meet the minimum lot areas, but just from a density point of view, the houses in the circle in that corner, in Milton, density about two point, two point five acres is the red one in, in Milton, and two point six acres per lot. So, overall, the lot density is very consistent with what's out there today. Next slide, please. In both towns. You can skip that one, that's an AutoCAD error. There was a comment that the road construction was inadequate, and that it was not a hot mixed pavement, it was a old-time pavement. I can tell you, I drove the entire thing, walked the entire thing, and photographed it in a number of places. And what I see is type I-1 botuminous pavement, overlaying type I-1 botuminous pavement, which is what your subdivision specifications require. The fact that the road is old and needs maintenance is one thing, but the material and the fact that this road has been there for as long as it has and is as drivable as it is, is a testament to the durability of its construction. We all have roads that require repair from time to time, they're not permanent. Next slide, please. Just a very quick summary. The right-of-way, as you go, the entire length of Hemingway Drive is consistent at forty feet, and the pavements vary from twelve to about fourteen feet. The Milton portion of the roadway's slope and the minimum radius requirements conform to your current regulations. On the Milton side, the access by passenger and commercial vehicles occur regularly. If you read the, the letter, it talks about cement trucks coming in, delivery trucks, UPS trucks. And I, I understand the real problem with vehicles coming into the Canton end is more low wires than physical access of the roadway. Maybe you can chat about that later. We know of no known traffic incidents in the Milton portion. The Schellers have lived there for about thirty-five years with, with no incidents. I mentioned, the density is consistent with the Canton end as with the Hemingway end as proposed. All lots meet the minimum frontage and area requirements. And just as a comment, because they commented at the end about Avenue, Avenue A is similar in width and grade to Hemingway, although the pavement is in somewhat poorer condition. We would kind of expect when they redo the utility lines up into that lot and the hack lot that was just recently approved, hack lot is the one next door, that roadway will probably get repaved. So, that's my letter in a short summary.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
I actually drove the area today with the fire chief. The chief actually said that he regularly sends his trucks through the private, all of our private roads in town, just for familiarity with those roads, to make sure that the people on the trucks know where they're going and, you know, what the roads are going to do to them to get around. They've been through this road, they actually did turn around in the Schiller's driveway the other day. The opening, the Hemingway, is sixteen feet. The opening for Avenue A is twenty-two feet. Chief and I get out and measured both of them. The town's trash contractor, actually per our contract with him, has to go and pick up trash, trash at 1259, and again on Avenue A at each one of those houses. This special language written into our trash contract that it goes up certain private ways that are narrow, they have a certain truck that will do that. When we went through, when we drove, we drove all the way through to the Canton side, and there was, the Canton portion actually has low wires in two or three different places. And it was the chief who picked up on it and said, that's why they're not sending in trash trucks, those are too low. It hasn't hit our pumper, but it would have hit our ladder truck if we had tried to bring a ladder truck through that area. It's more the switchbacks that you really wouldn't, you can bring a ladder truck in there, you wouldn't want to if it was in new development. Through the Canton part, through the Milton part, they're all straight. There, there weren't problems with turnarounds on the Milton property. Milton also has buried electrical services in that area, and these would have that same requirement.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McCetrick?
Thank you. I have sent the board a couple of memos, one of which was in response to discussion at the last meeting. And just recently, partially, just to supplement what the engineer is telling you, I sent a memo for you to consider for this meeting, and you probably have that in front of you. I'm not going to go through every part of it, but I'd like to summarize it, if you don't mind. Hemingway Drive and Avenue A are both private ways, they're both described in deeds as early as 1912. They're both shown on recorded plans, in the case of Hemingway, as early as 1920, in the case of Avenue A, in 1912. A private way can be determined by the planning board to provide adequate access to two, to new lots, but there are criteria that the planning board must determine in order to decide that you can have an A&R plan that has adequate access on the private way. And the engineer has already reviewed for you what each one of those characteristics are that have to be determined by the planning board. I think the engineering information, and there's more detail in the memo that the engineer has given you, both responds to the memo provided by the neighbors and goes through each of those criteria in detail. So, I would just say, in summary, that this end of Hemingway Drive, the end where we're proposing these, these new A&R lots, three new lots and the existing lot, and one lot that has frontage on Avenue A, this end of, of Hemingway Drive is superior in access to the remaining parcel, although they're all accessible, and they're all used by numerous lots. The density is equivalent to what now exists on, the proposed density would be equivalent to the density in Canton that now exists. The development pattern that's being proposed is consistent with the development pattern in the Canton side on Hemingway Drive. And the use of this continued use of Hemingway Drive in its existing design is preferable to creating, for example, a subdivision road to access this end for, for a number of reasons. One is, it's, it is an historic road, it was designed by, by a famous landscape designer. Particularly on the Canton end, the road is very interesting because it curves around in a very scenic way. It has a width, a pavement width, which is, which maintains and assures that traffic is not going to speed, and the design particularly ensures that, especially in Canton, because it curves back and forth. In Canton, the road goes uphill somewhat, but in Milton, Hemingway Drive is level. So, it, it's a very accessible portion of road, and there really is not any problem, and has not been any problem, with getting any type of vehicle into this part of the driveway. The planning board's determination is about how good the road access is for this A&R decision. And I think we've, we've spent more time analyzing and looking at this even than we did before we came to you initially. And I feel more confident at this point that this is a very accessible and safe roadway. If the planning board has concerns and questions, they shouldn't be about grade because we meet the grade standards. If, if the roadway is paved, is on the narrow side, it's designed to be that way, and it, it keeps traffic going slower if it's maintained at that width. But there's plenty of right-of-way if you need another foot... But there's plenty of right-of-way if you need another foot or two. You know, I'm not advocating for that. I'm just pointing out to you that that's really not an obstacle here because it's a 40-foot right-of-way. That's ample to place utilities under the roadway, to place pipes under the roadway, and to provide whatever roadway is necessary. I did review, you know, the cases, and there are a number of them. There's a lot of appellate decisions about what constitutes adequate access to a lot. Interestingly, most of them are about lots on public ways. And the standard is really pretty low, the standard that's been enforced by the appellate courts for a public way is, you know, as I said in my memo, roads that aren't paved, that have gravel surfaces, roads that are as narrow as 11 feet wide, roads that are partially flooded sometimes, as long as it's another form of access, those have all been allowed. But those are public ways. And the reason that the courts allow those for a public way is that the town has the right to improve those roads. With a private way, you have to apply the three factors that you're supposed to look at here, the grade, the slope, the quality of construction, and decide whether the road is adequate and safe as it is on the ground. And we are maintaining that it is. A number of the comments, and they're very valid comments made by the neighbors, happen to refer to problems that occur on the Canton end of this roadway, apparently. But they are not problems in this end. We have no problem there, no problems with getting large trucks. There have been cement trucks. There have been 10-wheelers that have come in from this end. And in fact, when neighbors in Canton want to bring big trucks in to their properties, they bring them in from this end. So this end of the driveway is in good shape and is perfectly able to serve three additional lots. There will be more room to turn around if there needs to be a little extra room at the sides of the road if you have these three new lots. I think we're just beginning to meet with the Conservation Commission. The lines haven't been formally delineated yet, the wetlands lines. And there will be some work that we'll have to be doing with the Conservation Commission as to what can be done and where on these lots, although plans have been drawn. But as far as the A&R application goes, this is the best way to approach development at this site. It keeps it as much as possible the way the whole area has been developed from the time that it was originally owned. A lot of it was owned by the Hemingway family, and they sold off big portions. They created plans for big portions, and they sold off smaller lots. And then some of those lots have been divided again, almost all on A&R plans on Hemingway Drive, which have all been approved by the Canton Planning Board. And in order to do that, the planning board had to decide if the drive was safe and accessible for vehicular traffic, according to the three criteria that we've explained. So there are plenty of examples of lots on the Canton side. None of those lots have frontage, most of them on a public way. They're all on Hemingway Drive or on offshoots of Hemingway Drive. This particular end of the driveway or roadway is very close, relatively speaking. This is the 1,000 feet of the roadway. The other 2,000 feet are in Canton. So there are other lots that are much further in than these will be. I'm going to address Avenue A a little bit here because Avenue A is a different right-of-way. Similar dimensions. It has a poorer paved surface at the end, but there is another lot that's been approved there. It hasn't yet been built on. But when it is, it's expected that a sewer line is going to be brought into that lot. And the expectation all along has been that there would be repaving of that area. The lot at the end of Avenue A has also just changed hands on September 30th. It's been purchased by a new owner, and that new owner is likely to want to do some roadwork on the end portion of Avenue A. There's also a couple of interesting, well, there's one interesting case handled by the Milton Planning Board, appealed to the Superior Court, appealed to the Massachusetts Appeals Court. In the end, the Superior, the planning board denied an A&R lot in 1982 on Avenue A. I think one of the main parts, main issues in that case was that one of the lots was substandard from a lot area perspective. In the end, Superior Court judge decided that that didn't matter because an A&R determination doesn't determine whether the lot complies with zoning. But in addition, there was discussion of the access and the quality of access. And the Superior Court judge decided that the access was sufficiently good to provide good access to the new lot, and also decided the other issue about whether the zoning had, you had to meet the zoning requirements at the time that you applied for the A&R lot. This decision was appealed to the Massachusetts Appeals Court, and it was affirmed in the Appeals Court. So it's not a case that gives you a precedent to follow, but because it was a lot on Avenue A, it does give you some idea that, you know, this issue has been looked at already. And Avenue A has been found to be adequate access for an A&R lot. That pretty much wraps up my commentary. I don't, I believe that we've addressed the issue of restrictions. I'd be happy to answer questions if there are further questions about those, but there are no longer restrictions on development at this time on these, on this piece of land.
Question, pardon? It may be in the documents you submitted, but I don't recall. Who owns the roadway and how wide is that roadway in terms of like a right-of-way?
40 feet is the right-of-way. In terms of who owns it, beginning first, most of this land was owned by the Hemingway family. Some of it was also owned by other landowners whose names will be equally familiar from a historical standpoint. What the Hemingway family did was to gradually subdivide their lots. Oftentimes, the lots went to family members, but they were also sold to other people. And when they sold lots that were internal, the first one I can think of is the lot that was sold to Richardson in 1912, which is the first mention of the access through this land area that we're talking about for this application to that Richardson lot. And then beyond it, back up to Green Street. The Richardson deed has a linear, a dimensional description of the access going through the land that currently is the Scheller land. And it's granted as a deeded easement. So the Richardson land has a deeded easement through what was still Hemingway property. It had certain dimensions because it was described in the deed, and it was described as an easement to use the way in all the ways that you can use roads in Milton and Canton. And that's generally the language that's used to describe the right to use this road in both areas.
So is, in the way it's managed now, or who's responsible to maintain the road?
Yeah, I did address that. I didn't talk about it, but I addressed it in my memo. There were two, there are two recorded agreements, one dating from 1912 for Avenue A, which is really very specific and talks about the rights to use Avenue A and anticipates that more lots will be created on Avenue A. So it also addresses what do you do when a new lot owner comes in and all the other lot owners have paid for the prior improvements? It lays, it describes obligations to maintain as including not only plowing, but also roadway service, and also plantings along the side of the roadway. So it's quite a thoughtful and interesting maintenance agreement. And it does date to 1912. What happens these days, from what I can gather, is that one lot owner, the one who's most willing to spend the time, currently it may be Peter Hicks, I'm not sure, notifies the other lot owners that it's time to pay a certain assessment, basically to pay for plowing, but sometimes there are other maintenance costs, and he collects the money and takes care of the contract for the plowing. That's how it happens with Avenue A. Hemingway Drive is governed, at least in this end and in that middle area, the middle subdivision of land, which was in our original application, that plan. That's governed by an agreement that about Hemingway Drive, that the agreement has two parts, but one of the parts is about how to maintain Hemingway Drive, who has a right to use it and what the obligation is to maintain it. And that agreement further details exactly how budding landowners are to meet, to talk about what the needs are for maintenance, to assess the cost of maintenance, and to collect if people don't pay. So it's really quite detailed. It's similar in some ways to the kind of trust that you might record for a subdivision today or an A&R plan, where you have private lot owners in a private way, so that the lot owners are responsible for the maintenance of the private way. So there is already an existing agreement that addresses a lot of this. And there are meetings. I don't know exactly how it works, but there might be a meeting once a year. There are requirements in here for notifying every lot owner addressed by that agreement, that there's going to be such a meeting. And then they can elect a representatives or a committee. And the committee then carries out the responsibility of deciding what the maintenance needs are, what the costs are, and what people should be assessed. In 1967, the original assessment was $200 a year, but it's probably changed since then. It may be less formal than that procedure now. That's often the way these things work out. It's, you know, it's always possible to create additional recorded agreements about maintenance if it seems to be necessary, or if there have been problems with the prior recorded agreements, or if they're too old and they need to be refreshed and updated. I did want to mention a couple of other things. There was an A&R lot approved by the planning board two years ago on Avenue A. That's the Hack. Hack family now owns that lot. And at the time that that lot was approved, some neighbors asked that an agreement or restriction be filed, that that lot could be only used for a single, to support a single-family home. Now, that's the zoning, but the restriction sets that in place, and that arose in part from the fact that there had been prior, a prior 40B application. We were very upset about it. They didn't want to see these lots subdivided or to see multifamily housing proposed for these lots. So the owner agreed to record that restriction and has done so. There was also a further agreement, which was not required by the planning board, but there was a recorded agreement to place, as soon as the new owner was ready to use Avenue A, that they would place $5,000 in a bank account for the maintenance of the road that was supposed to be established. So those are two additional conditions or restrictions that were done in the case of that particular lot. We haven't had any discussion about that for these. And the maintenance, the idea for the maintenance on Avenue A was that road ends at the land events, the people who live at the end. They had more or less maintained the roadway from the edge of the Piper lot to their lot, and they felt that it would be good to have some contribution from the new lot owner starting right up front. That's why that agreement was reached. So.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak?
Hi, good evening, members of the board. Dennis Smokey from Hill Law on behalf of the Friends of Hemingway Woods. I realize that this is not the first night that you've dealt with this matter, and it's late, so I'll get right to the point. The adequacy of the roadway is an issue that, you're not the first board to have to grapple with that issue, and I'll offer my legal expertise in the area in very brief fashion. 81M provides the purpose of the subdivision law. And the case law tells you that in exercising your discretion about determining the adequacy of a private way, you are to look to the purposes of the subdivision law. And I'll just tell you this, and you can check it if you like, the purpose outlined in your local rules and regulations is verbatim identical to 81M. Those purposes include exercising discretion with due regard to the provision of adequate access to all of the lots in a subdivision by ways that will be safe and convenient for travel, lessening congestion, reducing the danger to life and limb in the operation of motor vehicles, securing safety in the case of fire and other emergencies, et cetera, et cetera. One point I'll make right at the outset is that this lane at 15 or 16 feet, whatever it is, is not a fire lane in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. By regulation, a fire lane must be at least 18 feet. I'll give you the site for that. It's 527 CMR 10.03. So any anecdotal information you have from the fire chief about trucks, you're here to determine whether the way is adequate, not whether or not, in fact, the fire chief says it may be okay or not okay. As a matter of law, it's under 18 feet and therefore doesn't qualify as a fire lane. Back to your discretion as a board. As Attorney McCadrick referenced, there is a difference between how you determine the adequacy of a public way and a private way. The reason you don't have much discretion if this were a public way is because, as she mentioned, the town has an obligation to maintain the public way. I have authority right here that says, and I'm reading from the A&R Handbook, a publication put out by the Commonwealth's Department of Housing and Community Development. I'd be happy to provide a copy. In a section, it says...
Can you, I'm sorry, can you tell me what page, since I do have it here?
On page seven.
Seven, thank you.
Top of the page makes reference to the planning board having broader powers in determining the adequacy of a way which is not public. And I want to explain the rationale behind that because you are the only arbiters about whether this way is adequate. It's not otherwise protected by statute. It's not the responsibility of town meeting or of the highway maintenance supervisor. And I wouldn't rely just on the A&R Handbook, although I'm glad that you have that as a resource. I also have an example in a recent case in the land court that was a jury trial. The planning board in Belcher Town denied an A&R endorsement for a road that involved a strikingly similar set of circumstances to what we have right in front of us tonight. It was a half-mile-long gravel road that was a private way. It was 20-foot wide max, but narrowed to 11 or 12 feet. It had some potholes. Speeds were limited to 15 to 20 miles an hour. There was testimony in front of Judge Long that fire trucks could pass. Even an 18-wheeler might make it down this road. But in light of the purposes of Section 81M that I just outlined for you, which include public safety, fire safety, the planning board discretion to deny that endorsement was upheld by the courts. And the reason was because that road, which was similar, it's your judgment about which is more adequate. And that's not the only case. There's a case from 1955 referenced right here in the A&R Handbook, Reading v. Roland, where a 10-to-14-foot-wide way with ruts and occasional flooding was deemed inadequate. There are other cases that go that way. So to the point that you're not being asked to do something unprecedented by refusing the endorsement of an A&R because of the inadequacy of a private way. It's happened with some frequency, and like I said, just three years ago, the land court affirmed a planning board determination along those lines. One more, a couple more quick points. This board, I don't know if any of the current members are still here or remember this case. It's an analogous situation. It's not exactly on point. It was not an A&R. It was a special permit. In 2013, in a decision signed by Bernard Lynch and Michael Kelly, the Milton Planning Board denied a special permit for development on Hillside Street. I don't know if anyone's familiar or cares to look, but in that case, there was a driveway of 1,800 feet for three homes, and it was determined that that drive was unsafe for vehicular traffic in general and at night in particular. The proposal... The proposed new section of the driveway does not have sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for vehicular traffic. So my point is this very board has made exactly the determination that my clients are asking you to make tonight in a previous matter, although it was not an A&R, it was a special Last couple of quick legal points, and then I'll turn it over to any of the folks that would like to add some factual gloss and answer questions. And I apologize, I was not here for the prior hearings, but one of the issues that came up in my diligence in preparing for tonight is I looked at the definition of street in your bylaw. And it's on the very first page of the bylaw, Section 1, Page 1. AC defines street, and it says, "A private way shall not be a street with respect to any lot which does not have a pertinent to it recorded right-of-access to and over such way for vehicular traffic." I'm not sure that issue has been vetted. I raise it simply because in preparing for tonight, I saw that definition. I don't believe the application satisfies that definition. Second, also from your bylaw, in looking at the area regulations for the rez, our residence AA district, now I'm on page 60 of the bylaw, Section 6, Paragraph 7. I know we've been under the thinking that's 150 feet. What it actually says is that the minimum frontage of a lot on any street for the construction approval under the subdivision control law, given subsequent to March 10, 1990, shall be 200 feet. I have no reason to doubt that the project, that the area is sufficient, but I think the plans before you only have 150 feet frontage. That's an issue that I don't think has been addressed. I believe that the applicable frontage required in this district is 200 feet. One more quick point, and that is that from my quick review of the plans, it looks like parts of, a couple of the lots are actually in Canton. And I'm not sure if there's been a similar A&R application in Canton, what the plans are for that, but I just note the issue. That's it for the legal stuff.
All right.
My clients are with me, and they may have further responses on, in further support of the letter that they submitted.
My name is Nick Venky. I'm in the butter. I live at 60 Hemingway Drive, lived there for 13 years. I'm also one of three co-presidents of the, what we call the Hemingway Drive Association. That's a group of neighbors that live on the drive. I'm joined here tonight by Dr. Burr. He's also a co-president of the association. And together with Mrs. Troy, we signed the letter, wrote the letter to you about the adequacy of the way. We maintain our own way. So we take care of the plowing, we take care of the repairs. I can tell you that the conditions on the way, in particular in the wintertime, are very difficult. And they've been difficult for a long time. I wanted to quote here from minutes of a association meeting. And by the way, these meetings are done, you know, we follow the rules that we have. We announce them, we get a quorum. It's a majority vote in terms of what happens on the drive, in terms of repairs, in terms of plowing, et cetera, and cleaning out of culverts and so, so forth. So January 27, 2008, one of the members wondered if it would be feasible for the hunts, the plower, to blow turnouts at a few points along the lower drive to allow cars to pass each other when the width of the drive is down to one lane. Some expressed skepticism that this could be done. Old timers reminded us in the days past, there was a general understanding that the drive was one-way downhill under snowing and icy conditions. Present at the meeting were the Scheller family. So this is something that is in the record as far as the, the drive goes. I did meet, just say that, with, I was looking for a supervi, a surveyor of highways. So I went to Canton Town Hall, and the superintendent of Public Works was there, informed me that supervisor, surveyor of highways reports to him. I showed him a plan. We had to deal with an issue of the pillars at the end of the driveway. And he told, and I asked him, you know, since you're doing this as a living, what, what you, could you advise us here? And when he looked at the, the width of the drive, he said, "This would not be a street in Canton. It's not wide enough." So it was just clear from that perspective. And that was Mr. Michael Trotta, Superintendent of Public Works, joined by several other people, including the town engineer. I don't know if you have specific questions. I did not have the courtesy of seeing the letter or seeing what the Scheller group presented to you, but I would remind you that the drive in the condition that it is now and drought circumstances is a far different situation than it is in the wintertime. So are there, are there any questions about our letter to you?
I have a question for you. Do the current residents have a legal obligation to maintain the road?
Well, we live there, so we have a living obligation. I don't know if it's, so we want to be able to come and go.
The answer I would say is no. There is no legal obligation for anyone who lives on the road to maintain it. At least you've got a, that's probably the way it is.
Well, the, the group would vote, and then people are assessed.
But if they said no.
They would have a lien placed on their property.
I, I.
And it would be charged.
Well, and any, that was.
I mean, I don't know what, you know, but that.
My.
I don't want to go there. I'm not a lawyer, so I probably get myself into trouble.
Well, my next question is, if the lots were subdivided, would the owners of the new lots have any obligation to maintain the road?
Yes, that would be my assumption.
That would be your, your view. And you're a lawyer, what do you think?
No, I think.
You identify yourself?
I'm Wince Swenson. I live at 65 Green Street, also 65 Hemingway Drive in Milton. So no, I think that the, the agreement that applies here, 4429, as a mechanism for governing when and whether repairs and upkeep are going to be made, it's done by either a majority rule or as delegated to the committee that sent you the letter. It could be a decision not to do that. In terms of lots that, I mean, our attorney raised the question whether the application actually provides for access in the application. We don't think that it has. So that's sort of a threshold question in terms of what the obligation of additional lots would be. Do they even have access?
Obviously, if they have, if they, unless they have an obligation to repair the road, if they had no legal obligation to repair the road, then they could decide. We don't think that we will pay for any repairs.
That's correct.
And would you say that would be the case if this, these lots were approved?
Sure, it would be the same case, yeah.
Would they have the right to maintain the road based on the, based on, based on statute?
So the way that I personally read this, and I think this is the consensus of the, certainly of the committee, the current committee, is that that is a decision that is made by the majority of residents that have a right-of-way. This is spelled out in 4429. It says that the majority has the exclusive right to, now my words, regulate the repair and maintenance of the drive. That responsibility can be delegated to the committee, but in either case, the majority rules. So the majority could decide not to do that, not to maintain it, not to repair it. And in fact, in, for much of the drive, there are decisions all the time not to make repairs. The lower drive has had some benefit of more recent repairs, in part because there was significant water damage. The drive floods a lot. We have an intermittent stream that floods over the, the road. And so there are decisions all the time whether to make repairs or not. But there is no, there is no individual right of a homeowner to say, "We're going to compel repairs to be made," as far as I can read.
Could an individual homeowner make the right on their own? Make the, excuse me, does they have the right to make the improvement on their own irrespective of what they?
You want to opine on that? I mean, so.
That's what this memo is arguing, based on MGL, Chapter 41, Section 81L. It's saying that "All those with deeded rights to use a private way have the right, under Massachusetts general laws, to repair and improve the right-of-way and to place utilities under the way, providing they do not interfere with the rights of others." So I guess the question is, while you may not have the legal obligation to maintain it, does this, does an individual property owner say, have the ability to say, "All right, well, if you're not going to, I'm going to."
So one of the, so one of the decisions that's been made has been to keep the drive in a sort of a relative state of disrepair, to cut down on cut-through, cut-through traffic. And we had the Schellers engineer say that on a day where he staked out the, the road, there wasn't that much cut-through traffic. But the Schellers themselves, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, have actually complained about cut-through traffic and the, and the rate of speed of cut-through traffic. So there could certainly be a decision by the majority that we are not, that your interests in repairing or upgrading the road are at odds with the rest of us, and we're not going to allow it. That would be my view.
I think what you're referencing is the sort of ordinary standard. Someone with rights in a way normally has exactly what you've read from the memo. This situation is not a garden variety right in a way. There's a separate recorded instrument that creates an association for the management and maintenance and ownership of the way. And so I would say that more specific document governs and would control.
So if these new lot owners, do they become a, a party to the association?
If by majority vote, in accordance with the text of the document, they're allowed in, I believe.
What if they don't, what if they don't want to be, what if they don't want to pay to fix the road or plow the road, and they say, "We're not going to join any."
Well, that, that underscores exactly the problem with, when this land and these series of restrictions were recorded, it was not contemplated that there would be further A&R subdivisions along here. That was just simply not contemplated at all. This was a common scheme. There were multiple restrictions placed on multiple properties, and nobody was thinking about that. We thought we had the entire corpus of who was going to live right here, right now, and they created this document to govern amongst themselves. They didn't think that there would be new development. So it's an open question. I'm not sure quite how it's going to happen.
What is 4429? I, you know, that's a mystery to me. What is it?
What is it?
Yeah.
So it, it is the restrictive covenant that provides for a right-of-way, that also provides for the governance mechanism of the road.
So this is Chapter 44, Section 29.
It is, we, we, it's a reference to.
A book and page.
Oh, okay, this is.
It's attached, it's attached to the letter from the committee.
And it's what the engineer had said, did not, I think, that, in their testimony, they said it didn't apply to this portion of the lane.
So Ms. McHettick said that, you know, there's sort of two parts to it. One relates to sort of the ability to build and subdivide and so forth, and the other relates to the governance of the drive itself. They have not contested that the governance provisions of this agreement apply.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
The only thing I'd want to add, since you talked about my residence, the Richardson house, that was not sold outside the family. So the Hemmingways, Augustus Hemingway and his wife, who was a founder basically of the Audubon Society, they made an arrangement with their children. If they lived on Blue Hills Farm, which was the farm, operating farm, they would get a house and a certain amount of acreage. So the three daughters lived on the drive, and Gus, the son, lived just across the street where Governor Weld lives. The houses that were in the farm, so there was, there's a fire station actually in the farm. And the great grandson of Augustus Hemingway lives in that now. There's a clock, and you can see how the fire trucks came in. Another family lives in what they call the Button. That was the house where Mrs. Hemingway Senior required her husband to join his friends and smoke cigars and play cards. So this is kind of, that was their community. So it wasn't like they were selling things off to make money. This was really a family enclave, if you will. And that's how it remained for a good period of time. And I would just add, some statements were made previously about the shoulder. There are places where the shoulder, and this is in the committee's letter, but the shoulder does drop off. It's up to four inches. It floods, there's water in it. Cars, I mean, I guess it was asserted that there haven't been any accidents or words to that effect, but cars get stuck in there all the time. There are near misses as cars try to juggle by each other. The road, the way is, is narrow as 10 and a half or 11 feet, not 14 feet in general.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? How many houses are on Hemingway Drive today? There's conflicting numbers in the materials. Is it 13? Is it 14?
13, in terms of how we.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
I have a couple of questions for Bill. Bill, Milton has a lot of private ways, private lanes.
Yep.
Do we have a sense of the widths of many of these lanes?
I don't off the top of my head. I can look them up.
Do we, do you think the town has a record of them? A town engineer or DPW or?
We actually do, because of our, because of some of the stuff that we've done, looking at plowing, yes, we do have a list of them. And we, I believe that list actually has widths on it, too.
Okay, so I'd be curious to, to see what, what that is, what, what we have on average. I'm really curious about having a 40-foot right-of-way and sort of choices about not maintaining the road or maintaining the drive. I mean, I live on a, on a private way also. There's 10 homes on it. And we maintain the drive, and it's, and it's, the pavement's in as good a condition as any other reasonable roadway in town.
Would you want to have to spend your money to improve it, widen it, so that your neighbor could put additional homes on his lawn?
I'm not going to interrogate.
I'm sorry. I ask it as a question.
I'm asking really a question about the choices that the 13 homeowners are making about whether to maintain a road or not. Because you, you've spent a fair amount of time complaining about the condition of the road, but yet you've also said you've made a clear choice not to improve it because you don't want cut-through traffic. So that is just, I'm just curious about that.
Could I add a thing?
Yeah.
Denny Swenson, Green Street, President of Friends of Hemingway Woods, but I'm also a neighbor in the neighborhood that's affected by these agreements. In this area, well, all of the neighborhood, but in this area is in ACEC. And I'm providing a couple of photographs that will show that the land on either side of the roadway is wetland. And this is a habitat area of a rare species. And, you know, we were talking about the shoulder and the drop-off of the pavement. So just to, this isn't even a bad snow, but it shows you the water on the side of the road drop-off. And in an ACEC, wetlands can't be filled and paved in an ACEC. So there, there are protective reasons, habitat reasons as well. It's not just a, a balance of principles to be taken into consideration. We actually, during blue spotted salamander season, it's a couple of weeks, we close the gates and we, we send memos to one another, try not to drive after dark and in the rain in this part of the drive, because this is, this is a area that we care about for the special season.
Did you come and speak to us previously about the ACEC? Or did, maybe you spoke to us about that?
I did talk about it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Are these the same?
Yeah, yeah.
It's the oldest ACEC. It is, and the northern section of Fowl Meadow, which is what the ACEC that we're talking about, is the most sensitive portion within that total ACEC. Other parts of the ACEC have been degraded due to salt and other activities. But this portion is the most untouched of all the portions. And for that reason, it's been a place where a lot of recordings have been done of endangered species.
And what, what portion of the, of these private ways are included in that area?
All of them.
It's the whole neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask the applicant to come forward again. Sorry, did anyone else have anything from the public? I should have clarified that. Okay. I have a couple of questions that were, I'm going to remind the applicant of the questions that were raised specifically directed at the applicant. One second, I'm going to wait for your attorney to be listening, because I think she's going to answer them for you. You ready?
Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to remind you of some questions, the questions that it seems like were asked. One is just, there was a request for clarification about whether this street is a private way, based on its appropriate access to, I believe, a public way. Second was the comment on the subdivision bylaw requiring 200 feet of frontage versus 150 feet of frontage. And the third is just a comment, whether or not you want to respond is up to you, but was, whether or not there's a plan to be, to file a similar application with Canton. Those were the three questions I heard.
I'm not clear what the first one is.
I may not have taken very good notes now, but there was a statement that the private way is not a street unless it has appropriate access, I believe.
No, there was, they, they took this strange, the private way shall not be a street with respect to any law which does not have a pertinent to it recorded right of access to an over-such way for vehicular traffic.
I see.
If you can figure that out, have good luck.
Thank you for clarifying that, yeah.
Well, but my reading of that requirement is, in this case, would be that there is, there is currently a plan of a lot, land, an area of land owned by the Schellers. The Schellers have a deeded right of access to use Hemmingway Drive. If they subdivide and they sell lots, each lot would be provided with a deeded right of access to use Hemmingway Drive, which is what's happened when other lots have been subdivided further along in Canton, and that's how you do that kind of thing. You don't have the deeded rights to the lots before you have the lots approved, because they haven't been approved and you can't sell them. But the deed to each lot would have a deeded right of access to Hemmingway Drive. So that's the answer to that. I'm sorry, what's next?
200 feet versus 100 feet for frontage?
Well, my, my reading of that requi, of the way the zoning bylaw is written and...
Completely.
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, however, this is not a subdivision. This is a subdivision approval not required application.
It's an existing street.
Yes.
And so it's 150 feet.
And so 150 feet is the required frontage.
And if it were a new subdivision street, it would be 200 feet.
We have hundreds and hundreds on each lot. They're long and narrow along the road.
So, I mean, if we were wrong, we would have enough area to have more frontage.
Well, you could put in 200.
We could put in. I'm sorry, what's next?
Then just a question about whether or not you were planning to file a similar application in Canton.
Whether we're planning to file a similar app...
Similar A and R application in Canton. That was just a question.
I can, I can respond to that. No, we were not going to do that, because there are no new lines in Canton.
Okay.
The record is quite clear. Hemmingway Drive was approved, endorsed as an A and R plan by this board back in the 40s or 50s. And that line is the same line that's on the plans today. We're not changing any lines in Canton, so we have not planned to file in Canton.
There are other questions that, I thought the discussion of a maintenance of the way became a little fuzzy, so I'd like to at least explain my understanding of how this works. When you have a right, a deeded right, a deeded easement to use a right-of-way, you have a right to improve and maintain the part of the way that butts your property. In this case, we're talking about a section of Hemmingway Drive that is currently entirely owned, except for one entrance lot. It's entirely owned by the Schellers. So at the present time, and there's nobody on that lot because DCR owns it, so they, they could do some maintenance, they would have the right to, but, and they have deeded rights to use the right-of-way. But the Schellers are the ones who have the deeded rights to use the entire length of Hemmingway Drive that's at issue in this A and R application. And so they have a right, if they want to, to put new utilities under the road, to pave the road, to whatever width they want within the 40-foot right-of-way. And in fact, because they own the land on both sides, if they wanted to increase the right-of-way, they could. They don't need to improve the area of Hemmingway Drive that extends into Canton and up to Green Street, because their access comes, they, they go in and out from Brush Hill Road. They're much closer to Brush Hill Road. They could, they have a right to use Hemmingway Drive from one end to the other. They, they could choose to actually do repairs on the other part of Hemmingway Drive, as long as they don't obstruct the right of all the other people with deeded rights to use Hemmingway Drive to use it. If they don't block access by others, they can improve the way. But I think really what you need to focus on here is that, that the right, that the right and obligation, however you want to term it, to, to maintain Hemmingway Drive in, in this section right now is the, is a right that the Scheller family has, and they have maintained it. They have removed trees that have fallen. They have cleared the culverts so that there isn't overflow water onto the roadway. And they can do more if they want to. They haven't actually asked for any reimbursement from the committee that collects money for maintenance, except, and they have contributed every time they've been asked to the, to contribute to the cost of maintaining the road. They do receive, they do get the road plowed. It's a common snow plowing scheme, if you want to describe it that way. As far as the, the maintenance agreement goes, the, there are two restrictive agreements recorded in 1967. The first one is, is, has two parts. The first part's a common scheme restrictive agreement that applies only to certain lots, and it does not include this land. The second part is a maintenance agreement that defines and describes Hemmingway Drive, and it does refer to this land in, in that part of that, the restrictive agreement. In other words, this land is included in the maintenance agreement that, that addresses how to go about deciding what repairs need to be done and, and how to assess the cost of those repairs. And the Schellers have participated in that process, and that when they've been asked to contribute, they have contributed. So, you know, if, so there, there are choices that are made by those who have rights to use private ways. If a landowner has the right to use the entire private way in his deed, if it's written that way, if he so chose, he could pave the entire private way at his expense. He couldn't force the other landowners to contribute, but he could pay for it himself. He could run a utility line, you know, to the other end of the private way, if his deed gives him that type of access. At Mass, Mass general laws, in the absence of any of these agreements, gives a private landowner with deeded right of access to a private way the right to place utilities and repair the way. And it also provides for, in another part of the general laws, for a procedure for gathering all the different landowners together and trying to decide what needs to be done to maintain the way. So that's as far as the general laws go, in my opinion. Written, written agreements and trusts or that specify, in some cases, that a homeowners' association be set up and that the rights and obligations be spelled out much more specifically are very desirable. And if the current agreements governing Hemmingway Drive that apply to this end are insufficient, then this group of home, this owner can do just that before they sell the lots. And each lot can be sold and be governed by such a trust or agreement if that is the desire, not only of the owner, but if the planning board says it's a good idea, or starts looking at all these documents and says, we just don't understand what this means, and we're worried this road won't be maintained, it's going to be private, the town can't force the maintenance. So what are you going to do to show us that it's going to be maintained in a safe manner if new lots are put in? We, you commonly would be, you, will you always ask us to do that if we're applying for a special permit? I think it can be discussed in this context as well. I, I would like to ask Matt Scheller to answer some of the comments that have been made about the condition of and the use of this end of Hemmingway Drive, because the Schellers are the only people who live on this end, and they have been able to, they know what's gone on for the last 35 years.
Yeah, so we've owned the property for 35 years. I've lived there my entire life. Now I'm raising my children there, so. I, I see a far different road than, than our neighbors here in Canton. We've never really had an issue. The road may flood, but it's because a culvert gets blocked. So we walk down and we clean the culvert, and the road drains. You know, my family's been maintaining this end of the road for, for ownership that we've had. A tree falls down just three weeks ago. A tree fell down from the NBC property. Nick Vinky called me and said, hey, there's a tree down. So I went and removed the tree and then cut it up, you know? So they, they rely on us to keep that 40-foot right-of-way open and mowed. I mow it all, you know, every two weeks. So I don't really see the, the issue with the, with the, with the state of the road. And it just, we may live, live on different streets. I just don't see it. As far as, you know, the road closing for the blue salamander, we've never gotten notification. We've never really closed the road for the blue salamander. I don't know where that's coming from. And, you know, with additional parcels on this end of the drive, it would help defer the, any maintenance costs for the entire Hemmingway Road, so it would, it would help everyone in the neighborhood.
One, one last comment, very early in the comments, it was a reference to 527 CMR 10.03, the fire lane question. I have designed many fire lanes, and I can tell you, they do not need to be paved unless the fire chief tells you it needs to be paved. It needs to be 18 feet of open, clear area. If that was not the case, we would have a problem, and Canton would have a problem. So I believe that was a irrelevant comment.
So one more hand, if we want to, if it's quick, we'll take your comments, Cheryl.
Thanks very much. I'm with, I live at 55 Hemmingway Drive. I'm one of the co-presidents of the Hemmingway Drive Association, and the only thing I want to add is a bit of a rebuttal to Matt Scheller's description of his relationship to his end of the drive. He began mowing the side of the drive when the Schellers were planning to sell their land and made the embellishment. Prior to that, for the 20 years that I've been there, I was the main one who mowed the side of the drive. It is true that Matt Scheller did clear a tree that fell down. Matt Scheller's not the only one along the driveway who has cleared trees that have fallen down. I have, and other neighbors have done it. So the idea that the Scheller family has maintained this end of the drive is really not correct. Furthermore, the culverts, the culverts we have, the Hemmingway Drive Association has hired contractors to come in and clean out the under-the-road culverts at least twice during the years that I've been there, and we've cleaned out the culverts all along the drive, and the expense has been borne by the whole Hemmingway Drive Association, which of course includes the Schellers. So I did want to just rebut that image of the Schellers down there by themselves maintaining this drive on their own. Thank you.
Okay. Amen?
Well, I don't think there's any question that Avenue A is inadequate. It's too long, it's too narrow, it's too curvy, the construction is terrible. I don't, just, I, it isn't safe, it isn't adequate, it isn't convenient, it doesn't Then we get to Hemmingway Drive, and Hemmingway Drive is a more difficult question for me. And if the applicant owns the, I'm not sure that I, I fully understand who, in fact, owns the 40-foot right-of-way, and who has an easement over the 40-foot right-of-way. And how, whether state law, in fact, trumps the maintenance agreement of the landowners, I just don't, it's unclear to me. And the maintenance is important. If this were a new subdivision on a private street, we would determine what sort of roadway we wanted for the subdivision. And we're usually pretty relaxed about the width of the road and all the improvements that would need to be done on a street of, of this sort, where there are a lot of considerations to say, don't make a boulevard here, be a little respectful of the, of the area. So, but if we did a subdivision, we would insist that there be a homeowners' association, and the homeowners' association would have an obligation to maintain the road. And of course, here, there are other owners, and how one would fold them into it would be something that we would have to address. But it's not a, it's not a subdivision, it's a, it's an A and R. And if the applicant has the right to fix the road, some applicants, when they, before they come in for the A and R plan, they go out and do some fixing of the road, so that when the planning board takes a site walk, the road is in somewhat better condition than it would have been otherwise. So here we have a pretty marginal road. And I say marginal because I think it's, I understand the, you know, the option, it would seem to me, depending on what the legal basis of this is, which I don't know, the option would be to do a subdivision and get a subdivision street. You could do the same thing. The A and R route avoids the subdivision-street process, but it doesn't come up with a way that these people will be obliged to maintain the road they live on, the private way on which they live, unless the owner who sells them the lot says you will have an obligation to, you have an obligation to help maintain the road. However they figure it out, I think that if there, if you get a lot of construction traffic on that road, it's not going to be very safe or convenient for anyone during the construction period. I think that you've got to be real careful if you want to be safe on that roadway now. Whether it's convenient, I would say that it's, it's pretty hard to turn around on that road unless you use someone's driveway. Otherwise, you have to go through to, I guess there's a, there's a circle in the middle of the, the middle of the, in the middle of the road. So I'm, I'm conflicted.
Who wants to go next? Well, I'll go next. So I'm a little bit less conflicted. I guess one of my first concerns and comments is, do we really want a, do we really want a subdivision application on this property? You know, is this a road that we want to see 18, 24, 22 feet wide with sidewalks and a circle at the end, which is actually going to just increase the ability of people... a circle at the end, which is actually going to just increase the ability of people to get to the Canton side of the road? So, you know, I'm not sure that's what we want here and I'm not even sure if there's a right for them to do that here, it depends on, that would be subject to conservation and many other issues, but that's not really our purview. For me, my, the issue I'm having is really precedents. You know, I was on this board in 2014 when we issued an A&R on Avenue A, so we thought it was adequate then. Thank you. There it is. You know, the Supreme Court found it was adequate way back in the 80s, but this was 2014. So we've, this board, or at least a few members on this board, actually found it to be adequate in 2014. And then I look at the precedents of the Blue Hill Nursery site, which came before us recently for a two-lot A&R subdivision, and that public way was not even, that was restricted, they weren't even allowed to drive on it. And it was in far worse condition and so, and we again issued an A&R based on that roadway being sufficient for A&R. So for me, this roadway, at least the bottom half here, is far superior to the A&R for Blue Hill Avenue and then the precedents for Avenue A is, from a very recent finding, is compelling to me. So that's where I'm at, at the moment.
I have a question on the, the attorney cited or mentioned the denial of the application over on Hillside. I think that was challenged, is that right? And did that ever end up in court, Bill?
It did, but the case was dropped.
And you have to remember, that was a decision by two members of the board.
It was a special permit for an open space development.
So it was not an A&R?
No, it's a special permit.
Right, okay.
April?
So I don't think the application meets with the spirit of mass general laws and tension of what an A&R is. I don't think the road is sufficiently wide enough if two cars can't pass and they're looking to increase the number of homes by 38% on this road. I just don't think it's appropriate. And I also have to say, I want to point out, while it's not in our purview, permitting this as an A&R lot allows a loophole in MEPA that would not require MEPA review for these homes, which I think is a significant challenge given that this is an AC/EC. If it was a subdivision, it would require MEPA review. And there would be a whole lot of new environmental thresholds for them to meet. And I don't believe those would apply to the construction of a single-family home on a single lot under an A&R scheme.
Could you say that again?
So MEPA, if you're building a single-family home, you're not required to go through MEPA review. There could be some new considerations because this is a designated AC/EC that I'm not aware of. But if it was a subdivision, it would be multiple single-family homes would definitely require MEPA review, this may not. So I think there's a lot of environmental concerns based on what we heard here and just the simple designation of an AC/EC that make me think MEPA review should be required, but because this is an A&R lot, it would be a single-family residential dwelling, construction permit wouldn't require MEPA review.
So you said you think, you're not sure, should we have it clarified?
I know there's definitely a loophole for single-family residential. I don't know if layering, and maybe Tim or Bill know this, layering the AC/EC on top of that requires some new review requirement, I'm not sure. But it causes concern, it doesn't change my opinion, but it causes just an additional layer of concern.
I don't believe it needs a MEPA review for three single-family homes.
That's what I said. If it was a subdivision, it would.
I don't think so, not on, not on three single-family homes.
In an AC/EC?
Even in the AC/EC. 128 is built in the AC/EC. Royal Street is built in the AC/EC.
Yes.
That whole area goes all the way out to Curry College and includes Curry College is in the AC/EC. The AC/EC goes, Norwood Airport is in the AC/EC.
Well, assuming it is, but the question is, do you have to do MEPA review?
No. But I'll give you that.
Well, yeah, you would, if you hit, meet certain thresholds, you certainly would.
It would be subject to MEPA.
Yes, meeting the MEPA thresholds.
No, which means you need a state permit. There's no state permit required, even for subdivision.
Well, like I said, it doesn't change my opinion anyways.
Did you comment, did I understand you already, you said that maybe don't have a right to come for subdivision?
No, I, I mean, they have a right to come for subdivision, the question is whether they can widen the road based on conservation, but.
I've been, we don't know whether they have a right to come to in for a subdivision. I've been, it depends on who owns the land and what the restrictions say. It'd be whether, I mean, if they couldn't make a subdivision road, that would be a material factor in, for me, just because I don't think it would be really fair to own all this land on a road and not, I mean, if they have the right to fix it, then they could fix it and come back for an A&R. And I, you know, we've done some pretty, pretty small subdivision streets, 12 feet for one house.
Well, for me, it all comes down to the prior precedents of this board and it's very recent history. It's not 1980, although 1980, the courts also found it, so. That's what it's coming down to for me. I don't think we can change our standards.
The hyperproperty is right next to the good part of Avenue A.
What Alex was observing is a very different species of road.
It's fine. I understand that.
It'd be nice to have.
But so is this end of Hemingway, so, very different species of road.
It'd be nice to have what Joe commented earlier, what is the width of some of the private ways in Milton. And, you know, the length as well, I think would be important relative to the fact that some are dead ends and some are through streets.
I look to the applicant for direction here.
I can hear.
Oh, he's just suggesting, do we have a, he's asking about what the widths are of the different private ways in town. That's a reiterating, he's just reiterating the comment made by a member of Taguayus earlier about getting a summary of the, some of the average widths around town.
Well, the DPW has that information and when I was a selectman, I drove every single private way, took a tour. There are some really, really narrow ones, really bad ones, and there's Hemingway Drive, which is one of the best, I can tell you that. But that's just, you know, that was years, that was probably six years ago and I don't, they have a list of them and they have, they know what the right-of-way width is and I think they also know what the paved width is. So, you know, if that's useful to you, we can provide that. I'd like to.
Are you looking at it?
No, this is some of them, this isn't all of them. I know Marion's talking about, and that's the list I was talking about, and I know that she did that. I know we have a list of what the, what the width is, public, private, all of them, so.
Do we have a record of the A&Rs and what kind of widths those have been granted on by this board in the last, let's say, 10 years, 15, I don't know?
We could, we don't have it, we could get it.
Does the applicant want us to take a vote, or would you like us to continue?
What I had hoped to get tonight, of course, we'd like to get a vote, it's going to be positive. If it's not going to be positive, and I'd be happy to get the sense, you know, various members of the board, you realize, I think Alex has already addressed this, that, you know, well, I can ask to withdraw the application and return if we want to, due to the road, what you would be comfortable with for an A&R application, if I knew what that was. You know, I mean, does that make sense? Well, it may, but, you know, I mean, that's, but that's, that is an avenue that would be available. The other avenue would be to withdraw the application and come back with a subdivision application. And then you would have to decide what roadway you thought would be adequate. I would say to you, as a general principle, that a 40-foot right-of-way, while it is not the 50-foot right-of-way that you normally require, is adequate to provide whatever width of road you feel is necessary, if that's what you feel is the best thing to do. And this area of land is at one end of Hemingway Drive. No one else is involved going out to Brush Hill Road with what you do.
DCR owns half the road for five, for six years.
Yes, yes, I understand that. DCR.
I'm gonna just ask not to go back and forth, please.
DCR acquired their land for park purposes. And they do, there is, there is a development right which is questionable, but it's, all of that land is available in theory to be built on now because the restriction that was on it 30 is, has expired. So DCR owns, as you enter the driveway on the right, there's one lot that's owned by DCR. When this land was sold to the Schellers, about six years later, the owner sold the remaining lot to DCR. And so, yes, DCR has, what I'm saying is that there's no other property with a house on it that's using this land right now. If DCR wanted to take it out of park purposes and sell it to a private owner, it could be developed as a single-house lot. So there's potentially that other lot, but it's DCR land, I have, do not think DCR is planning any time to do that. So, so, you know, I see these various options, we've been looking at them from the beginning. We've approached this as an A&R application and I want to explain over again, once again to this board, that Hemingway Drive extends 1,000 feet into Milton, 2,000 feet into Canton, it's a very old way, there's been a lot of development on the way, and many of the development subdivisions have been A&R approvals. So the way has been found sufficient and safe and accessible by the Canton Planning Board numerous times. So we did think that it would be appropriate to approach it as an A&R from this end and the reason for that is to keep the roadway as close as possible to what it currently is, to keep, you know, to keep traffic as slow as it possibly can be and to, you know, these issues that you're talking about, if you're adding driveways, you have more turnouts, you can always create turnouts, they can all be addressed. And regardless of whether they technically have to be addressed in order to receive an A&R approval, if you need conditions to be established that you want us to agree to, you can tell us what you want. And if you feel this is an appropriate avenue for us to pursue for approval of these lots, if you don't, and, you know, if you draw a distinction and for some reason feel subdivision approach is superior, we can use the subdivision approach. But I think what we really just need to know is what would make, you know, what, either the road's adequate now or what do you need for it to be adequate? The grade is clearly not an issue. The construction, I'm not sure is an issue. It seems to me you're talking about road width.
We've done this before, actually, we haven't, but I have.
Okay.
And we did it in East Milton with a way that was no good and we said, well, look, you do this, that, and the other thing to the way and then it would be fine, or we'll give you your endorsement before you fix the way. And then they didn't do what they wanted to do. But I think that specifying to you what we'd like to see done is a potential way of going forward. I, you know, if we don't get a consensus, I mean, if you've got people saying absolutely nothing, and, I mean, we would want, we wanted some significant, but not anything inappropriate improvements and we want cars to be able to turn around at some point, I think. I mean, we would, we would tell you, we would think about the changes and tell you at our next meeting, if that's the way you wanted to do it, which probably is the best way to do it.
I did want to add to that, I don't see any reason why the planning board can't also require that there be a proper document establishing that each lot, which will be a deed, deed restriction or a deed, something that will be referenced in each deed but will be separately recorded, that articulates the obligations of the lot owners to contribute to the maintenance of the way. I mean, there's no reason why we can't do that with an A&R application, just as you can't with the.
But the A&R endorsement, you just, is just an endorsement that the subdivision approval is not required.
Well, but we, we, we agreed to a condition, a restriction on the Avenue A application two years ago. What I'm saying to you is that if you want us to agree to do that.
There would be ways of making it legally possible, but just not writing it on the plan, that's not the law.
No, no, what we, what you do is you create a draft document saying, this is the restriction we will record. And the planning board, if that's what you're interested in seeing, can say, yes, we're pleased with that idea, but it, no, it's not a condition, we're, we're going to do it anyway, we obligate ourselves in some fashion to do it. I understand that you're not supposed to, you know, an A&R, an A&R approval is really based on existing conditions, that's all. So, but I think there's a way to work it out if you feel A&R is the better approach. I have no, I don't believe there's any objection to creating such a document, I think it's appropriate.
The, I, just listening to what's going on tonight, I completely understand the neighbors wanting to maintain the road in a condition where they can pass but not improve it such that it invites a lot of traffic. I completely understand that. But with that said, if they come back with an A&R, what's to stop them from saying, okay, the road's 20 feet wide and we'll get granite curbs on either side?
They come in with subdivision?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
So, I mean, as far as the, if I can say this, as far as the neighbor's standpoint, it may be a downside to not go this route and have them come back with a subdivision.
Yeah, I just want to comment, I think the 40-feet right-of-way, when you asked about that versus 50 feet, to me, 40 feet, 40 feet in this situation seems adequate. And then where it says that it's 10 and a half feet to 14 feet wide and there are shoulders, I mean, I did the site walk, but I don't remember how much of it is 14 feet, so I'd like to have a better sense of how much of it is really at 14 and how much of it's more at 10. I mean, I'm not comfortable making, taking a vote tonight because I, I'm not at a point where I think I have enough information. I'd like to know the roadway widths of the other lanes because I think that's relevant. And I'd like to probably go back out and look at this again and, for this length of this way and understand, you know, how much of it is at 14 and how much has the shoulder? Because I do think that shoulder is part of the 40-foot right-of-way. And I think, you know, to both of your points about, or all three of your points about whether they, you know, could improve it and come back with an A&R or come back with a subdivision request, that maybe it would be better to have some kind of guidance to them instead of having that come back in that fashion. Because I do think a 20 or 24 foot wide with a curb and gutter would be out of character for this location. And we've talked about this in other locations too where it's out of character.
But the point is, I was using an extreme to, maybe, maybe I was using an extreme to make an example as I think about it, but the point is, I think the neighbors like the road to look pretty much the way it looks today.
Right.
But if they come back with an A&R, it may be not 20 feet wide, it may not have granite curbs, but it's going to be wider, it's going to be nicer, it's going to be paved, it's going to be different.
Right, that would be more.
It's going to be significantly different.
Rumble strips are a, are a nice thing.
They're good for cut-throughs as well, but it's going to be significantly different.
That actually brings up a point that I meant to ask earlier. Has there been any discussion with the Neighborhood Association about lessening the number of lots from five down to fewer?
No, and I'm not.
So that's something that we had discussed with other applicants previously?
You've got, you've got four lots now, including the existing lot.
There's an existing lot, which the house would continue and that would be one of the lots. There are four other lots, one of which has frontage on Avenue A, three of which have frontage on Avenue, on Hemingway Drive. You know, there's enough acreage, those 13 acres here, we're not sure what the outcome will be of the conservation review. It is quite important to know what the planning board feels is appropriate in terms of a pavement width. pavement width, or whatever issues are bothering you in terms of, you know, what we're looking at in the existing roadway. I'll get the information that you've asked for, exactly where, how wide is it, you know, where is it fourteen feet, where does it not have, where is there a drop-off with a wetland area so that you can't really create a smooth pull-off? I, I, I'll get you the list of private ways, although I'm not sure what the relevance of.
It's just private ways on which A and Rs have been granted.
Yes, yeah.
How am I gonna figure that?
Well, you're gonna talk to the town planner. He has a.
We know we can go and look at Merzweig.
Photographic memory for these things.
We have a list of the private ways.
That can't be more than twelve feet wide either.
Oh, okay, that's a lot different. Okay, now I understand why you want it. Okay, although still, I, I would say to the planning board, you know, you're looking at this application and this roadway, these set of circumstances, you need to just make the right decision for this one.
Actually, it's one application encompassing two roadways, one of which is significantly less good than the other one.
At that end, it's a little bit.
Where it is, that's right. And the fact that in the future someone might say, this is impossible to live on, we've got to fix it, is great, but not good enough, in my view. But I'd suggest we have given them enough to think about so that we can, with their consent, of course, continue this till our next meeting.
Do we have your consent?
You do have my consent. If you can provide us any further guidance as to, are you looking at fourteen feet as a width that you'd feel better about? You know, I'd like to have some idea what we're trying, you know, I understand some of this road, some of this Hemmon Way Drive is fourteen feet of pavement, but.
You know, there are other people who might have some ideas, so let's, let's.
Well, I think it, Mary, it also depends the condition on the shoulder, you know, if the shoulder is flat and it doesn't have, it's not drainage, it's not wetlands, you know, so, the, because that plays into whether there's maneuverability for passing. So, either.
I understand, yeah, okay, yeah. And I think we did, we talked about that, but we'll just give you a more detailed.
Yeah.
Picture of exactly what's there up until the back, the proposed back lot line of the, of the new lots.
Five days from the next meeting.
When is the next meeting?
October 27th.
And you'll send us a letter?
And you'd like us to send you some of this information in advance, hopefully five days? This, these last two memos, we just prepared very quickly the last couple of days to respond to the neighbor's letter, but normally we do, I will provide what I send to the planning board to the neighbors group.
And we, I raised some issues that if, if you could answer them, it would be nice. Who owns it, is maintenance a right or a?
No, blue, no.
You got it.
I think the answer to that is that you, is that you record a document requiring that the.
Whatever, we understand the statute, and the question is whether or not the agreement trumps the statute.
Okay, I, yeah, I'll take another look at it.
All right, I'll take a look.
As we think it does, but maybe it doesn't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Could you start that with Mike with his blue pen over there and maybe circulate that pen around for signature? This is the site plan approval for Ten Basset Street.
Did you write it, Tim? Did you write this?
Yeah.
If it hasn't been reviewed, let's review it quickly.
Why don't we read it?
Yeah, thank you, I thought this had been read.
It had, it was circulated, but.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't, but did you read it?
I did, briefly, though. No, I'm gonna let you read it.
I'll defer to the attorney on the board.
Now you've locked yourself in, Alex, now we're all lazy.
While we're signing this, we have to.
Do you have copies of that?
It's Ice House last night.
We need to quickly discuss the planning board appointment to Capital Improvement Planning Committee, so, Ms. Lamro.
It's been resolved.
Okay, that's, we're done, so we've done our business for the night. Thank you.
So, she's, you're in, right?
I'm the member, I had a scheduling conflict, we figured it out for the next several weeks, so we're good.
The last thing, is Ice House after signing?
Yes.
I'm recusing right for Ice House.
Are you, are you all thinking October 27th?
Hey.
Do you do 259?
I think we just told them they could come back.
It's gonna be a long night.
I brought the blue pen.
I tried to do Henry's on 7th, but I got.
You're going to be long in tonight?
No, we can, we can continue it. I mean, it's, it's just in case.
Just in case they show up. I see, I see, I see, okay, fair enough.
I think this is brilliant, Tim, really brilliant.
There's two of them, the blue pen, so we need one more, right?
Alex is. From standing on the shoulders of giants.
Oh, gosh.
I copied the language from another one.
Good luck to you, Mr. Corcoran. Sure how much this board has left in the tank tonight.
I'm mindful of that.
Hold this one.
Read it, do it.
Eat that pen when you're done.
Go ahead, we're gonna keep signing while you talk.
That's fine. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, Ned Corcoran, along with Pat McKean, who is the, the brothers are the owners of the property, you know, as the Ice House, I have a.
Send that that way to work.
Brief PowerPoint, its materials at the board, I think is all seen in the past, but I have conducted over the course of the last six or seven months, half a dozen meetings with neighbors, abutters, interested people in the potential redevelopment parkway. The McKeens have determined that they do want to move forward with a rezoning effort. And I have provided the board with the draft of a proposed bylaw that is redlined against the bylaw that was submitted to the, to town meeting in February. We can start with a quick overview, and then, at the board's, the board wants to carry on for a while, great, if it wants to continue to another night, that's fine as well. I do, I, I will say this, I think that over the course of the summer, a fair amount of progress has been made with people relative to their interest in seeing a form of development at the Ice House property. Most significantly, the notion that second and third floors would be changed, could be changed from an office use to residential use with affordability component baked in has helped some people turn the corner. Can't speak, there are hundreds of people who live proximate to the, to the site, although there's only one, there are two legal abutters, there's the next-door neighbor and there's the, and Home, Inc., across the street. They're really the only two legal abutters to the property. The, the concerns seem to sift down to two issues. I'm sure there's more, but the two that I have heard consistently are, one, deals sort of with the psychology of development, it's a general sense of psychology in some ways in town, can we support a good development here, and what's the outcome if we fail? A portion of that, I think, has been mitigated by the sense that there's residential upstairs, so it would be a twenty-four-hour development as opposed to a, turn off the lights at ten o'clock, so that people would pay, be paying attention to the quality of the care of the site on a routine basis. The second issue is the treatment to the parkway and what needs to happen with the parkway. We had requested that representatives of DCR perhaps come to a meeting to discuss that. We were advised that DCR does not do that, but that they would take the town's comments under advisement at the appropriate time. So, on Tuesday, Bill Clark, Joe Lynch, and I met with the chief engineer and two other folks from DCR to talk about the process and what would they need to hear and when would they need to hear it. They did acknowledge that it's a general-purpose roadway, that it would really, improvements and changes would really boil down to what would be shown by the warrants. So, warrants being, meeting certain conditions for signals for certain things. One, one issue, I think largely, a lot of concurrence on, is making sure that whatever goes here, you have safe crossing. Right now, the parkway is two lanes in each, it's two-lane south, it's really almost four lanes north, because there's two lanes, a bike lane and a parking lane on the northbound side. Historically, the reason why the northbound side is wider is because they used to have carriage races on the southbound side on Sundays, and they needed to move traffic, southbound traffic to the northbound side, so they had plenty of weight to accommodate that. But you have two, two lanes plus in each direction, dead flat, dead straight, fairly high rate of speed. And you have an over sixty-two population across the street, in particular at Home, Inc., and you have the high school across the street as well. You have kids and potential for senior citizens to be crossing six, four, four to six lanes of traffic. How do you accommodate that in a safe manner? So, regardless of what happens, there is some sensitivity to the notion of safe crossings, in some part arising from the death of the girl last winter crossing the Truman Parkway. There are very limited numbers of safe crossings. There is a, there is a, you know, the large neighborhood to the west of Pope's Pond that comes across, lots of kids come across to the high school, to the middle school, to Tedeschi's, and there is no safe crossing, they just cross. So, that would be an issue. Secondary issue would be whether or not you would put in a, more of a full-scale traffic signal to regulate left turns in and left turns out, and that would be a strictly, according to DCR, that would really be based on what the warrants would show. What's the traffic volumes, what's the traffic study? So, we're not, certainly not at a point to presenting that material to DCR. We need a zoning, we need zoning approval first, and then that would be among the myriad of permits that would be necessary. There are conservation commission issues, there are DCR issues with the parkway, the special permit process that would be required under the bylaw, so a fairly healthy multi-department, multi-board, multi-jurisdictional set of issues. It's potential that there's MIPA issue based on potential traffic volumes, parking volumes, et cetera. So, we know that there's state and local oversight. The real question at this point for the McKeens is moving forward in a process that moves forward to consideration of the bylaw, because they do want the opportunity to engage in the acquisition of a development partner for the sake of pursuing a development that would be a mix of uses. So, Tim, if you can flip that forward just to the, that one. So, that was the last visual that we showed. It's really two large buildings, two buildings that replace existing buildings. The building on the left is proposed to be the bank building, that had offices upstairs. The building to the right that's di, that is parallel to the roadway was a market with cafe. Fifty percent of the ground floor had to be food market. That proposal doesn't change. And then the second floor, again, would be offices. The, one of the modifications to the bylaw that we've suggested is that the, that instead of, that within the thirty-five-foot maximum height, you could have three stories instead of two and a half stories, and the third story, the second and third floors could be occupied by dwelling units, a maximum of twenty-four units. So, figuring eight over eight over the, sixteen units, eight over eight over the market, cafe, and eight, there's four over four over the bank would be an alternative to the commercial space. That would create a different mix of parking, because your parking loads would be different at different times. It would, as I said earlier, it would create the twenty-four-hour presence. We're proposing in this case, as part of the discussion with some of the neighbors who are sort of more interested in the housing component, because this is site-specific zoning, it's would require, deals with multiple, it's a planned unit development under Section Nine, Chapter Forty-A, that in this case, the minimum component for affordability would be twenty percent as opposed to ten percent. It is a, it's different from what the board has, the town has done on all of its other zonings. That may be an issue for the board for other reasons, but it is likely that the project would be financed in a combination of access to funding with twenty-five percent affordability. So, in this case, because that's the likely financing scenario, we agree that we would put out a twenty percent affordability component rather than the, than the standard ten. And that really would drive a developer towards that financing approach and that greater percentage of affordability.
Can I ask a question? Are you suggesting using tax credits to fund?
Don't know. I mean, that's, that's possible, could be, you know, mass housing.
Yeah.
There's various, various angles to get there. I mean, we, we did, an earlier meeting, I did discuss the possibility of pursuing a friendly forty-B approach as a means of certainty of outcome. You know, I, I know that there's, there are questions about whether or not that's appropriate. The McKeens have really decided they want to pursue the develop, the zoning matter first. So, that, that remains an issue for some with respect to certainty of outcome, but I think the bylaw is pretty well-crafted. It was well-crafted before, it's adjusted to allow the housing component. I think it's reasonably well-crafted, it's gonna be difficult to do something different than what is being proposed. The McKeens, if bylaw is, is passed, the McKeens would then pursue a development partner who would then spend the money to upgrade the plans, do the traffic analysis, do the architecturals, do all of the interfacing with the different boards in the special permit process, but there's no additional expenditures to be done between now and town meeting. If, at the end of the day, zoning doesn't pass, then we'll pursue, you know, other options under the law. Tom Callahan raised the issue, was interesting, in one of the, well, reasonably well-attended meetings among neighbors that were conducted at the library, there was real discussion about what are your alternatives? And, you know, what you can do under zoning is you can do four single-family house lots. It's a Residence B, it's two acres, it's not gonna be developed as four single-family house lots. Tom raised his hand and said, look, the develop, the owners being nice here, this is eighty units plus. He said, I'm in the affordable housing business, this is not the right place for a large affordable housing development, you ought to really think twice about what the legitimate options are, this is a good plan, we really ought to think about how to get to that good plan outcome. So, given that, the, really the goal on the, on the McKean side is to move forward with this zoning, hopefully in February, if there's a, if there's a special town meeting call for February that would get at this. And so, the goal from here is to work with the board on a schedule that can work for the board, to evaluate the draft of the bylaw, consider it, tweak it, adjust it as necessary. It's really driven on the existing plans without much change, but preservation of open space is there, the notion of the, the connection to the, to the conservation land in the rear is there, the preservation of key green space features in the front of the property remains there, those, those important considerations remain. The nature of the development is adjusted, the real difference is the nature of the, of the development gets adjusted to provide the option to provide housing as a component of the project.
April.
So, I like this plan a lot better than the last plan, as I think I said at an earlier meeting. I have some really specific comments on your draft. I would like to see this expressly permit a mixed-use development, not with the option to add housing. I think that the neighbors who are coming around are coming around because they have the intention of seeing a mixed-use development, not something that may or may not have housing associated with it. And these are just my comments, people may not disagree, may not agree with me. I'd like to see a little bit more flexibility in the allowable business uses, specifically the food market, which will, shall occupy at least fifty percent of the first floor space. I don't want to see the town go through this effort at town meeting to approve a bylaw and then have something happen. and then have something happen and you can't get a food market and then you can't, you don't have a viable plan. So if there's something, I understand the desire is to have a food market, but I'm anxious about the idea that that's the only thing that can be representing 50% of the first floor.
Okay.
Again, in section 3A, it talks about the design shall provide small-scale retail-oriented business development, I'd like that to be something, say, mixed-use development. And then just a comment about the, the light, the proposed traffic light. Keeping an open mind, there's a lot of work to be done between now and the time you come forward with a plan that requires a traffic light, but I don't feel warm and fuzzy about that idea. I think the traffic flow on the parkway actually works quite nicely. I agree that the pedestrian access is challenging, particularly a warrant crossing the parkway up to Decker, there's not even a striped crosswalk, which kids are constantly coming from peers just walking out in the middle of the street. So I think there could be a lot that could be done to improve bike safety, to improve pedestrian safety. I don't think that creating a traffic light that's going to stop traffic on the parkway is going to benefit the traffic flow. The other thing is the drive-through bank. I'm not opposed to a bank, if you can get a bank as a tenant, I think that's fine. I am kind of opposed to the idea of people coming from Boston, finding a reason to pull in here, grab money and pull back out. I think that just creates more congestion and issues for, again, pedestrian bike safety. So those are my overall comments, otherwise I think the draft looks pretty good.
Thank you. I can say that we can reach out to the, there are several banks who've expressed interest in, A, financing it at favorable rates, and B, becoming the tenant. There's small neighborhood type banks, there's at least three of them that I've heard from. I can, you know, I can push back on them, at least understand the importance of a drive-through, and we can adjust from there. The issue with the light, if we provide a crosswalk, you have to provide a light. That's a, that's a pedestrian light as opposed to lights that are going to allow left turns in and left turns out. So that's a, there's two, there's two pieces to the light thing. Each needs to meet certain warrants, volumes of traffic making safe egress. One of the issues dealing with access in and out is the notion that, and Tim, if you go back to the, one of the overviews quickly of the, to there, so if you're going northbound on the parkway and you want to go into the site, and it's, let's say you are a delivery truck and you want to go north to the site, you have to go all the way up to Blue Hill Terrace Street and make that turnaround.
So I'm not really objectionable to a cut in the island, I just wouldn't like to see traffic that regularly turns right and stops everybody on the parkway when it otherwise could be flowing right through. The idea of a push-button traffic crossing, lighted traffic crossing for pedestrians, I think is probably fine, and I'm not going to rule out the other option, I just, as someone who travels the parkway almost every single day of the week, I just can't, I've been trying to envision it since you first mentioned it, and I just, I can't see that working.
Yeah, that's an important sensitivity of design and need and all that stuff, so, but that, your points are well-taken, I understand that.
Mike?
Are we clear that DCR would allow any kind of signal light there?
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to, I like, I like the supermarket specified because that, on the first round of this whole situation, that's what a lot of the people in the audience said, they'd like to know what's going to go there, they would like to just be, it's open to commercial, and who knows what that could end up there.
Mr. Whitehead?
I suggest that I'm not convinced that this is what the residents of Milton want. I'm willing to be convinced, but I hear you say that you've had very positive feedback, I think that's great. I suggest you file this with the selectman, and then we have a public hearing because we will then find out.
Are you suggesting you would, if we filed it, you'd conduct a public hearing sooner than...
I see, I'm, I'm, you know...
I'm happy to do that.
I'm convincible that this is, if, if, if the residents of Milton want this, I'm can, I can be convinced of, to support it, but I'm not yet convinced that they want it. And therefore, I think that you should file it as an article with the selectman, because I don't see that the board is, without public input, going to take this on for itself. And then we'll, we'll mark up a quick public hearing, and if the public do not show the enthusiasm that you have detected, then you will have options.
I will research that, those issues with the selectman's office in terms of what needs to get filed in order for you guys to conduct a public hearing, you know, whether that requires a citizen's petition, which I know you don't like to receive, or whether I, simply filing an article request with the, with the selectman would give them and you the ability to call for, for a public hearing, I mean, there's a, there's a technical issue, I haven't studied that, so I'll, I will do that. I'm wide open, and I think it'd be a great idea to have a public hearing sooner rather than later, because...
It's going to take some time.
It's going to take some time, and there's not much left to bake here.
And the, the other thing is that we have a lot of big projects, and we're already here till 11:15, so if we are going to do a public hearing, I think we should block it out a half an hour for three meetings in a row or something.
Or we have a special meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
I have just a few comments, and then we'll, then we'll move to adjournments. First of all, I haven't reviewed some reserving comments on the text. I have a different opinion on the signal. My opinion on the signal is that to the extent it's warranted, it could be potentially a solution to some of the cut-through traffic in town. I think it might be a good thing to have some of the traffic on the parkway have to stop every now and then and not have some of the people cutting through our town just to get to Boston. I'm 100% supportive of a crossing and would, would absolutely expect to see it, and frankly would be very happy to see this project support the addition of a few additional crossings along the parkway as a source of making everybody feel good about the project. I think residential's a positive addition. I would be interested to see if the, if the development partner here would be interested in considering one and one-plus bedrooms as the main and if not sole offering to target empty nesters and young professionals, especially across from the high school, you could be getting your teachers, so it'd be nice to be able to see some...
Not two bedrooms, smaller, smaller...
Certainly not three bedrooms, but yes, one and one-plus is what I would love to see.
I think it was two.
And even studios. And, you know, I think the 20% is an interesting idea, I want to think about it some more as to far as if it has any negative consequences, but it's certainly a great idea in concept, and whether we have to write it in or it's just something used as a financing mechanism is, is another part to consider, but I think it's an interesting idea. So those are my comments, off the top of my head.
Right, I will quit adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your patience tonight.
Oh, I would have liked, that's just what I would have done.